Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Do you have a new city clerk? No problem. That's the biggest mistake you made. Boss?
Present.
Pippiya?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Schröder?
Here.
Fromm?
Present.
Barnes?
Present.
We have a court. All right. First item of business, thank you all for being here. It's a regular meeting from October 8th. I do not have any amendments. Does anyone have amendments? All right. And I would entertain a motion as presented.
Move approve the minutes of the October 8, 2018 regular meeting.
As presented?
As presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right. First item is public comments. If you're not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium. You can share for up to five minutes. You give your first name, last name, your ward, and your address. Okay.
She's not on the agenda. You're not on the agenda, so you would have to speak now.
Can I talk from here?
If you talk loud, so they can hear you.
It's about the property in 308A.
Okay.
I've got most of the cleanup done. The board's back on the side, but I wasn't able to get the roof done and the windows finished. My son's got West Nile, and he wasn't able to go into work. And I haven't been able to find anyone else that could come and help me.
Tell me your name again.
Gail Heberline.
Gail Heberline, okay.
So, you know, I'm...
Lot.
...finished. I mean, it's looking really good. All the trees are trimmed out. The tree that was dead's out. All of that's cleaned up. It's just the roof on the shed and the windows are the things that I haven't gotten finished yet.
So you say the roof on the shed and the windows are boarded?
I have tin over them like I did when I came the last time that you said you wanted to put the tin off and put glass in. And I wasn't able to get those done with him being sick.
Okay. Dave, can you come to the podium?
Just like a little extra time to finish those things up.
Dave, did you happen to go by that property?
Yep.
And Gail Heberline is saying that the only two things that weren't done were the tin is still on the windows and the roof on the shed.
Yep, trailer's just like it was.
The trailer's just...
Trailer's exactly how it was when she came last time. Got the tin on the window and partially painted and stuff. You guys requested to get it back looking like a trailer.
And wasn't there... When she says roof on the shed, is that back in that story, Jerry, where all that trash was coming out?
Shed back there. I thought we was gonna have her... She was gonna get all that stuff out of that shed. They'll get anything's out of that shed.
We put the boards back on the shed, and we're gonna repair the roof.
Yeah. Boards are up on... Back up, and there's about three or four two-by-fours scabbed on out there holding it.
And right now, it's scheduled so as of the 31st on that schedule...
30th.
On the 30th.
30th, October 30th.
So October 30th, at that point in time, the city has a right to abate it. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, counsel. Do you want to just continue on? Do you want to give her more time?
Are the shed down there... Yeah, I don't know if they're putting a roof on it. Get it sided. I mean, it's just a bunch of plywood weathered out there.
You look like they'd been exposed to the rain and stuff, right?
Yes. I mean, it's not sealed up. It's just standing up there. Big gap. That's why I can tell there's stuff inside it yet, so...
Have you been in the trailer at all since...
No, I haven't. Like I said, it was, you know, after the meeting, we had rain, and then my son went down there to do some mowing, and he contracted the West Nile, was in the hospital with it, and he just hasn't been able to go and do anything.
Yard looks real good. It's got all trees trimmed up there on it.
Doing like this to get people to help is just, you know...
But accumulated two cars down there now that it didn't have before, so had to get them off the other property.
So you took them off one property to this property?
I took them off of the government-owned land and moved them to my own property. I just had a guy that was supposed to come in and get them, and he didn't show up. So I'm trying to get my brother to come up and call him.
How long has he been sick? How long has he been sick?
My son? He contracted this like, I don't know, four weeks, five weeks ago. But they told him it'd take up to four months to get this all out of your system good. I mean, he's just not getting where he's moving to it. But then he kept attacking muscles and stuff, so he wasn't...
So why didn't he start doing it right away after?
He's just not getting up till before he's moving, so...
No. I mean, why didn't he start doing it right after we gave him the... He's had two months.
He's been sick for quite a while. You know, we had... Right after we was here, we had that rain for quite a while, like a week or two of rain. And then he went down and was working on the yard, trying to get it cleaned up before he drives there. I can trust that he's in there.
How does the council feel?
I drove by there today. I mean, I don't see how that shed is really salvageable myself. I mean, the roof's pretty bad. I'd almost be afraid to get up on it to try and put tin or something over the top of it. The sides are plywood, and, yeah, I mean, they're weathered. There's, I don't know if you'd call it a door on the front, but it's basically a piece of plywood, and they kind of took two-by-fours and kind of screwed them to the other wall to just kind of hold it shut, is what it looked like. But I mean, it's not really what you'd call a door. It's just they basically boarded it in. I don't even know if there... Is there another door on the side or anything, or just up front? So you'd have to unscrew all the two-by-fours now to get in there?
Door is actually on the south.
There's a door on the opposite side of the picture.
South is where the door is. North side's where they put all the boards to hold it.
And there's stuff spilled out on the ground, or is that all cleaned out?
There... I went by a while ago, and there's still some stuff that didn't get cleaned up, not very much, though.
Yeah.
It's... I've had area down here working. You've been doing this.
The trees and brush and stuff, I mean, I could tell.
Yeah, I could tell the trees and brush are definitely better.
It's the trailer itself. Have we condemned that?
That's what you're working on.
That's what we... That's what our... We condemned it to act on it as of October 30th.
Correct.
Okay. So the big question is if you want to extend it or go ahead and let it run out to October 30th.
Like I say, I mean, the shed was supposed to happen. I thought that we're gonna clean the stuff out of it and then...
That's what I kind of understood, just clean it out. Get rid of it.
Not just board it... Not just board the stuff that's in there in and then roof it. It was supposed to be cleaned out.
When my son was sick, I just, you know...
I know.
Get what I can do.
Still got in openings around it.
Trying to get things cleaned up for you all.
Critters. I know the neighbors to the north have chewed my air more than once about it.
Mine too.
They look at it every day when they come out of their house, and I understand that. I wouldn't want them to do that.
So you're saying you want the shed taken down?
I don't see how it's salvageable myself. I think you'd spend more money trying to make it right than you would to just tear it down and put another one up, to tell you the truth.
Is it on a slab, or is it on the dirt?
I don't know.
It's on rubber ties.
No, the floor inside's dirt?
No. It's boards on rubber ties.
Oh.
Okay. Is the floor any... Is the floor any good?
Last night, we opened the front doors of it and looked in. It was... Been a while now. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I know down there... I mean, I have a problem with if I've got any wood laying around, the termites get into it down there. It's kind of bad about in that area. If I leave a piece of plywood lay around tonight, pick it up in the spring, I've got termites underneath it. They're just... Unless you've put something down, they get in everything down there.
Well, I think...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask a question while Dave is still here. The very last time anything like this was addressed, what was the last precedent? How was it handled then?
Regarding this property?
When it got down to the wire like this, yeah.
We went ahead and proceeded with the others. The other two, right?
The other one would be...
Melaric and...
No, but that wasn't them part. The one that got tore down was...
Hers.
North forest.
Schoff.
Schoff.
And hers, we went and cleaned up, and also Melaric. We went and cleaned up.
Yeah.
And put them... Abated them to the taxes if they did.
Well, I really feel that we should stick with whatever way we did it the last time. We should do it. It's hurtful to do it, but if we have to do it, I think we ought to stick with the precedent that we already started, however we handled that last one.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
Well, if we don't have a motion to extend it, we already have the existing motion, correct? To abate it on the 30th?
Yeah.
So if no one makes a motion to extend it, it will just play out.
What are we extending just to put in now that we've decided that the shed is not feasible to salvage? Would it just be to put the glass in the windows of the trailer? Is that all that's left?
I would assume that we would abate all the parts that aren't completed.
I would think you abate the whole property, because that's what was on there.
To take it down? Take everything off?
That's what we're supposed to be doing, but...
Okay. So...
But if she asks till 30th to fix the windows and stuff, then just take down the shed or whatever.
So we had decided that as long as she put glass panes in the building, it was okay?
That's what she's talking about.
There wasn't anything on the base or anything that we had to do, that she had to do?
No.
Just get the windows and the doors and everything fixed up, put it sealed up, and we're good.
Okay.
If I can get that done?
So do you want to just let it play out and have her till the 30th to get it done? Is that a consensus? Is everyone shaking their head yes?
Yes.
Okay. So you have till the 30th, Gail? Okay?
Put the garage in. I mean, you're gonna put a roof on it, you want it sided?
No.
You just take it down?
Take the shed down. Don't you guys agree?
Yeah.
Shed down?
I think the shed is the biggest issue. I don't want it...
I'm glad you picked up the yard. I'm sure the neighbors are grateful for that.
I'm doing it as best I can.
So... Is there anything else you want to say regarding that, Dave?
Nope. We just... Yeah. I just need direction for the 30th.
The direction on the 30th to take down the shed? And then what about...
If the windows aren't fixed, what do we do with that? Build that up?
To take the building down?
So when you contend, then I have to have so many days to get it off the property then?
You've got so many days to get it fixed or off the property, yeah. If you want to move it, you can get it as long as it's out of there.
Yeah, and now that you've moved the cars on there too, you're gonna have to have the cars off there by the 30th too.
See, that was right. They had them on a buyout lot, so they had to get those moved.
Okay.
And you can't have vehicles on a buyout lot, period, so... She took those and put them down there, so...
Okay. So the direction is Friday to go ahead and have she... If there's windows in the trailer, it stays, and we just take down the shed. If the tin is still up on the trailer, it all goes. Is that the right motion... Action for Dave to take? Okay?
Are we tucking glass or plexiglass?
Plexiglass, I think.
Plexiglass. Or the original?
She wants to put in that, you know, she's always gonna fix it all the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Butch?
Do you want to ask? Oh, Butch, you have a question?
Yeah. Are the cars gonna be moved in?
Yeah, that's what we just said, is that the cars have to be cleared too. The cars aren't... Okay, so the cars aren't on the original one?
They're not really on.
Cars would be separate, I would think, wouldn't they?
But the cars moved from one...
The cars were at the location where she lives. They were on that buyout property and told them they had to move them. So then they moved them down there to where the mobile home is. And she called me and told me that they moved them down there.
Yeah, I did.
She said they were gonna be gone in a couple of weeks. So I said, okay, I'll give you a couple of weeks, and that's for you.
That isn't so much of a coming in, so now I'm trying to get my brother to move them for me. He's got a trailer, so...
So Dave, when we have something like that, when they make it so they're in... They agree with the other lot, they move it to another lot, do we have to start the process all over with these cars? Or tell me how that works?
I don't know. I would think so.
My suspicion is that it's a new abatement, because it wasn't in the original one for that property.
Well, this property...
Yeah. Basically, it's a new process.
It's a new...
I've had it a couple of times. They moved them, just across town.
And then you have to start the process on the new lot?
Yeah.
Okay, so the cars aren't included in this process?
No.
Okay.
But I'm gonna do my best to find them out.
Yeah. She just said she was gonna get them out of there, so we kind of been waiting on it.
So just the trailer and the shed?
Yep.
Are the cars on a driveway?
They're in my yard.
No, they're just off the west side of the...
On the lot.
Lot. West side of the trailer in the backyard.
But they are tagged?
They are not tagged at the time, at this moment, no.
Okay. Well, I guess when we go down there on the 30th, I guess that process will start, right, Butch? For the cars? Since they're untagged? Help me here.
I don't think the cars will be gone.
Yeah, that's what we've just waited. She said they'd be gone, so we didn't start paperwork down there, so...
Okay. Well, hopefully you'll get those gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess it really don't matter. If you think the trailer could be moved, you want to move it. There's a place to move it. Just as long as it's fixed up or gone.
It takes like five hours to move it. I will just... I've been trying to get the windows fixed.
Okay. Great.
And then telling them that the shed's gotta be...
Taken down, so if there's something you want in it, you better get it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming in and sharing with us. All right. Anyone else for public comments? All right. Business and discussion items. The first thing is fireworks request. On page seven.
There's more here.
I had asked the question if they had notified the neighbors adjacent to the practice field. Did you contact them?
I did. They had not, because when you had the special meeting, you approved them, and none of... They didn't even fill out the form, I mean, when the school did that. So I took it upon ourselves today. We called all the neighbors, and they all agreed it would be fine.
Okay. Just whenever they... If we have this again, will you just do that? Make sure the neighbors...
They're supposed to. That's what the bottom is. They're supposed to go get this signed, not us. They are.
Okay.
And so when you approved it at the special meeting at the parade, they didn't even fill out the form for the National Guard. So that school thought, well, they probably didn't have to do it either.
So did they just...
So I gave them that form. We gave it and said, you gotta... You gotta fill out the form. Well, actually, Dave told them they had to fill out the form when she caught him at the football. And then I told her. So then Sammy and I called the people.
Okay. So in the future, we'll just make sure they fill that out before?
They fill that out before.
Okay.
Yes.
A learning process. So the neighbors are all okay?
Yes.
So would entertain a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right. The next item of business is the volunteer waiver form. Was this drafted by Craig?
Yes.
So at the very bottom on page eight, number eight, on the bottom of page eight, we reference a volunteer supervisor. And I... Well, that one sentence, "The report must be made in writing with the supervisor followed within..." I think "followed" needs to be pulled. "In writing with the supervisor within thirty calendar days," don't you? That "followed" needs to be pulled?
Yeah.
Okay. And then after repetitive trauma, I thought we should add, "The volunteer supervisor doesn't tell you that it's someone of the city or not." So I thought it should say, "Volunteer supervisor required to submit written report to city administrator within three days of receiving the written report." Because the volunteer supervisor isn't necessarily you.
No.
So are you guys okay with that sentence?
I'll have to write that down.
Okay. And then on the second page, on page nine, I thought after the applicant's signature, we should have the volunteer supervisor's name printed, so we know exactly who that is. And then I also thought we should identify the volunteer project and expected timeframe to complete. So otherwise, someone would fill us out, and it would be... There's no timeframe or...
I thought that too, about having a supervisor in the project, but I wondered about putting it at the top, so that way it'd be easier for if you're sifting through a pile of these in the future, you know, for filing purposes. It'd be, you know, right? You want the top page to have all your information on it.
So just those three...
As far as what project?
That three data at the top? We can do that after that. The first one, aye, or do you want it above that?
Above that. I'd say waiver and release, claims and demie agreement, project, supervisor, and then the rest.
So they would have to fill one out... They would have to fill one out for every project they wanted to volunteer for?
Project, but not event. In other words, like if it's a project that takes more than one day, I mean, I don't know if you want to put that on there, but I think, yeah, that would...
But for me to go... And this is just a devil's advocate sort of thing. So I sign that sign, I read this whole thing, and I sign off on it. So wouldn't it be logical for me that I know the risk the next time around for the next project?
But we want to know you're going out there. We want to... We want you to communicate us when you're...
Projects differ.
Yeah. As far as risk, and we want to know you're out there and what you're doing.
One's raking mulch and one's painting the steeple of the schoolhouse. Those are vastly different things.
But these rules stay the same.
I know, but we would want to know what they're doing.
It was a different project, yeah.
You would be recognizing the special risk of that specific project each time.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
It's quite a bit of paperwork to be stacking up. So I sign off, "I'm a really good volunteer. I want to do this every single time, so you're gonna have twenty sheets for me."
Well, we don't have that many volunteers.
We want that many volunteers. We want that many volunteers.
I would assume that I would keep them by project, so everybody that works on a project would be in a folder.
Together, yeah.
Not by person.
And if it's a project that takes the whole season, then it's a project that takes the whole season.
And you want a timeframe? You want the timeframe on the front or the back?
Up there at the top, I guess, that's what...
Okay, you want the timeframe up there too?
Yeah, so we want the volunteer's name, volunteer supervisor, volunteer project, and expected timeframe to complete.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be two weeks, but it could be like fall or, you know, whatever. I think just the basis.
You're gonna leave it open for, like, for the summer for the garden club?
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Because the project...
The garden club doesn't exist anymore.
The project is gonna be, you know...
Sort of.
Well, Diane's a garden club.
The volunteer project, though, would be weeding, calling grant areas, no matter who it is, and the timeframe would be summer of 2019.
Rose garden.
Yeah. So...
Can you bring me the copy of the bottom of that?
Okay, and then you'll bring it back next time?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
It's not the garden club, it's a rose garden.
Oh, okay.
All right. The next item is reservoir dues, which has to do with our aerator, right?
Well, it really has. Any grant we go through for the community fisheries, I think that's what it is, CFAP, the fisheries program that controls all the, like the country public, they give us the money to take care of it. This, if we sign up for this and pay $25 a year, it gives us two points towards any grant that we submit with them.
What's that mean?
So they rank applications on how many points you check off. So this will... I forget if there's like thirty-five total points you can get or twenty-five total points you can get. So this would add towards that and get us a little bit more standing on any grant.
So besides that aerator, is that what we call it, aerator, that fountain?
Yeah.
The black squirrel fountain that we're gonna... So is there something else that you would use this program for?
There's possibilities. They have a whole list of things we can apply for if we need...
We do get fish from them every year, or money, because we fix the dock and whatever. We already do get some money from that CFAP, which is they consider it a grant of some sort.
It's... They're just... Actually, it's a lease. That's a... What they're paying is for us to take care of it.
So, at the very bottom on page eight, uh, number eight, on the bottom of page eight, we reference a volunteer supervisor. And I, well, that's, that one sentence, "The report must be made in writing with the supervisor, followed within," I think "followed" needs to be pulled, "in writing with the supervisor within thirty calendar days," don't you? That "followed" needs to be pulled?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, after repetitive trauma, I thought we should add, "The volunteer supervisor doesn't tell you that it's someone of the city or not." So I thought it should say, "Volunteer supervisor required to submit written report to city administrator within three days of receiving the written report." Because the volunteer supervisor isn't necessarily you.
No.
So, are you guys okay with that sentence?
And you all have to write that down.
Okay. And then, and then on the second page, on page nine, I thought, after the applicant's signature, we should have the volunteer supervisor's name printed, so we know exactly who that is. And then I also thought we should identify the volunteer project and expected timeframe to complete. So, otherwise, someone would fill us out, and it'd be, there's no timeframe.
I thought that too, about having a supervisor in the project, but I wondered about putting it at the top. So that way it'd be easier for, if you're sifting through a pile of these in the future, you know, for filing purposes, when we, it'd be, you know, right? You want the top page to have all your information on it.
So just those three, that three data at the top? We can do that after that, that first one, "I," or do you want it above that?
Above that, I'd say waiver and release, claims and deme agreement, project supervisor, and then the rest.
But if they, if, so they would have to fill one out, not the, uh, they would have to fill one out for every project they wanted to volunteer for.
Project, but not event. In other words, like, if it's a project that takes more than one day, I mean, I don't know if you want to put that on there, but I, I think, yeah, that would, but project would be the key.
For me to go, and this is just a devil's advocate sort of thing, so I sign that sign, I read this whole thing, and I sign off on it. So, wouldn't it be logical for me that I know the risk the next time around for the next project?
But we want to know you're going out there. We want to, we want, we want you to communicate us.
Projects differ.
Yeah. As far as risk, and we want to know you're out there and what you're doing.
If one's raking mulch and one's painting the steeple of the schoolhouse, those are vastly different things.
But these rules stay the same.
I know, but we would want to know what they're doing.
It was a different project, yeah.
You would be recognizing the special risk of that specific project each time.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
It's, it's quite a bit of paperwork to be stacking up. And so I, I sign off, "I'm a really good volunteer, I want to do this every single time, so you're gonna have twenty sheets for me."
Well, we don't have that many volunteers.
We want that many volunteers. We want that many volunteers.
Yeah.
I would assume that I would keep them by project, so everybody that works on a project would be in a folder.
Together, yeah.
Not by person.
Yeah.
And if it's a project that takes the whole season, then it's a project that takes the whole season.
Yeah.
And you want a timeframe, you want the timeframe on the front or the back?
Up there at the top, I guess, that's what it is.
Okay, you want the timeframe up there too?
Yeah, so we want the volunteer's name, volunteer supervisor, volunteer project, and expected timeframe to complete.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't have to be two weeks, but it could be, like, fall, or, you know, whatever. I think, just the basics.
You're gonna leave it open for, like, for the summer, for the garden club?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Because the, the project-
The garden club doesn't exist anymore.
The project is gonna be, you know-
Sort of.
So, like, well, Diane's a garden club.
The volunteer project, though, would be weeding, calling grant areas, no matter who it is, and it would, timeframe would be summer of 2019. Yeah, so, so you want-
Can you give me the copy of the bottom of that?
Okay, and then you'll bring it back next time?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect.
It's not the garden club, it's a rose garden.
Oh, okay.
All right. Uh, the next item is Reservoir Dues, which, um, that has to do with our aerator, right?
Well, it, it really has, um, any grant we go, we go through, uh, for, uh, the community fisheries, I think that's what it is, CFAP, uh, the fisheries program, uh, that controls all the, uh, just like the country public, um, they give us the money to, to take care of it. Uh, this, if we sign up for this and pay twenty-five dollars a year, it gives us two points towards any grant that we, we submit with them.
What's that mean?
Uh, so they, they get, they rank applications on how many points you check off. So, uh, this will, I forget if there's, like, thirty-five total points you can get, or twenty-five total points you can get. So this would add towards that and get us, uh, a little bit more standing on any grant.
So, besides that aerator, is that what we call it, aerator, that fountain?
Yeah.
The black squirrel fountain that we're gonna have them in? So is there something else that you, you would use this program for?
There's possibilities, they have a whole list of things we can apply for if we need-
We do get fish from them every year, or money, because we fix the dock and whatever. We already do get some money from that CFAP, which is, they consider it a grant of some sort.
It's, they're just, actually, it's a lease.
Is that what it is?
What they're paying is for us to take care of it. Uh, so we, all our efforts towards taking care of it factor towards, uh, that. So we have to at least meet as much as they're giving us back, and we, we blow it out every year, but-
So, so they give us fish every year?
They give us-
Or fixing the dock, you know, when we fix the dock and pay for all those things, and our guys' labor out there, we get money. We have to prove the money that, that they give us that we've spent on projects that we've done out there.
So we've never joined this before?
No.
But, but we probably should have?
I've never known about this before, so it's, they-
But we've participated in it?
We always get this money from the CFAP, and I'm not sure it's a-
So it's, okay, so the CFAP is a lease. So they, they just pay us, and they want to make sure we're working on it. This is a completely different program. Uh, it's, the twenty-five dollars goes to, uh, grants, um, through the reservoir, uh, Friends of Reservoir, but those aren't the grants I'm applying for, uh, right now. This is just to, to give us a leg up in the grant that we're going through from CFAP.
Which is for their area?
For their area.
Okay, yes. All right. We know, we learned more about that than we knew before. So, um, is there anything else you want to tell us about this?
No, uh, I mean, it's pretty simple. I mean, if, if, also, if seventy-five, uh, seventy-five communities haven't already turned in their application, uh, we could get the first twenty-five dollars off.
All right, first year free?
Yeah, first year free, so.
But did they just start this program, or it's an ongoing program?
It's an ongoing program. I don't know how long it's been in existence.
Okay. Well, I think we should go ahead and sign up for it, in hopes it'll help us in our grant situation.
And I can just do that, that's, I just want to make sure you guys are okay, if you sign up for something that's gonna be a recurring thing. So, that was-
So do you want a motion for that? No motion, just consensus for Austin to complete? Yes?
Yes.
Notices and hearings. Dave, did you want to report on the planning commission, or do you want Darlene? You're here.
Anything else for Bush?
Well, actually, I was gonna ask a question later on, so after you share, I'll ask.
They went ahead and, we're gonna send that off, public hearing on the zoning. We're creating those two new districts, that C-1A and C-2A.
And when is the hearing?
Uh, October fifteenth.
October fifteenth?
November fifteenth.
I was like, goodness, that, okay.
Okay, and then we will do, I took the commercial section in the book and completely redid it, I added the C-1A, C-2A in line with the rest of them. So, I have a public hearing that will be there too. If this is approved, the zoning part, then we'll go ahead and do the text amendment to redo the ULDC on the commercial section.
Okay.
Because I added those in line, so there's a few sections, numbers changed, the, uh-
So we do a text amendment to change the ordinance of the Unified Land Development Code? Okay.
Yes, and then probably have some page numbers, sections are changed, because there would be five sections now instead of three. So, that's all in for October fifteenth.
And then you are gonna have the master on that, because that would be the revised ULDC?
I have a master of it, I'm gonna try to put this back in and then change the page numbers to go with it, so.
Okay.
We might just have to get some new books made up too, or something.
Okay.
In the meantime, might find out if there's a few more things we want to change at the same time, get it over with.
That would be a good idea. If there's any other changes, bring it to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'll be on the fifteenth, and if we pass that on, bring it back to you for final approval then.
Okay. Thanks so much. Oh, did you have a, have a question? Oh, okay. Okay. But, uh, later on, I was gonna bring it up, but since you're here, um, on the code enforcement, if there are specific ordinance that we need to make it better around our city, you need to bring that to us.
We'll do.
So you just make a list of things that you think aren't addressed in the Unified Land Development Code, that we should add to it?
Well, that'd be a list.
Is it Unified Land Development?
No.
It's a city codebook, I'm sorry. Yeah, so whatever we need to, if we need new laws, that's what we're here to support you.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Is a short version of the original ordinance, so we can go back to, that's, the original ordinance is actually the law, and it may say what you want it to say.
Oh, okay.
You're just looking at the abbreviated part in the codebook.
Okay. So you'll check that out too?
I will, in my spare time.
Okay. Well, I just, I, I just want to make sure that, you know, we weren't, if it's not there, we can fix that.
I've mentioned to him several times about he can list.
Okay.
Can I, can I update you real quick on what's going on with these three properties?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Nine twenty-one North Fourteenth, Mary Ann Layman. She made me feel really bad, if you can believe that. Uh, so anyway, I got, uh, half a dozen Knights Columbus members together, we went up there Saturday afternoon, spent three hours up there cleaning her yard. We had a trailer load of junk, uh, a pile of brush that I hope by now has been loaded up and moved out of there. There's still a few things on her front porch, but they're, they're, they're good items, you know, that are gonna go into her garage as soon as we get her garage cleaned out. She told me that she's got a dumpster coming from Temps, and I told her to give me a call, and I'd get a couple more guys lined up, we'd go up there and help her clean out her garage, I've never seen such a mess in my entire life.
That's very nice.
But anyway, that'll give her some room for her car inside, and to put some of that stuff inside that's still outside. But drive by there, the place already looks a hundred percent better than what it did.
Did anybody happen to go by there? No? You did? Okay. Well, thank you for doing that, that's very kind of you and your, your-
Well, don't spread that around, I don't want people around town thinking I'm kind. It's on TV now. Nine oh five Calhoun, uh, talked to Mr. Hers on the phone, got another sob story there. I, I gave him until this coming Friday night, because he has made some progress, believe it or not, up there. I gave him until this coming Friday to get it finished up, or we were gonna go ahead and clean it up.
The twenty-sixth?
And as far as Mr. Walter at the, up there on Carolina?
Twelve oh five?
That is going to disappear, hope, the plan is for sometime next week.
Really?
Yeah.
We are gonna do that?
We are gonna do that.
We, we will do it next week? Okay.
I'm sure he's not gonna be real happy. I finally got to meet him, very pleasant guy, very laid back, but when he had enough of me, he said, "I'll see you," and walked away. So.
Hasn't the city had to go in there a couple times already?
We didn't.
That's just gonna be one of those places we're gonna have to constantly keep an eye on, and the minute something moves in there, we're just gonna have to send you. You know, people that do that, I, I think this council needs to seriously consider fining them and make it substantial, so you get their attention.
Yeah, well, at, at the meeting, they said there's only, there's two routes, either the route we're going or fining, but you can't do both, and you can't alternate, you have to either stay the course one or the other. And this is kind of what, we can change our course, but we'd have to change it on everybody, we can't pick and choose who we fine versus how we, who we assess.
But don't we charge them?
Butch, can I ask a question?
Well, whatever it costs us to clean that place out, he will get a bill, and if he doesn't pay it, then it'll go on his taxes.
Okay, so in a way, we are charging them anyway, but not this budget, they wait for it.
Unless he loses the property.
Yeah, but you know.
He loses the property, we get nothing.
Yeah.
Well, isn't this the property that actually you got registered letters out to somebody else on too?
No, no, that's a different property, that's Hers's.
Yeah.
Nine oh five?
Nine oh five Calhoun, yeah, now that, that's a whole different story in itself, not, you know, I, you don't have time to hear it.
Well, that was the one, you, you said you were gonna go to the courthouse, did you get it figured out?
They don't know.
They don't know? Someone called me, I'm sure other people got calls, that they went in to appreciate their name being in the paper.
Okay. Yeah, we got, uh, we got phone calls, we got letters.
Does her name on the resolution though? Is this property and address?
Uh, I-
Resolutions we got on these others, names aren't there, it's just the name and description and address.
Uh, was she?
Yeah, it's just property, it's not.
Okay.
But the fact still remains that her name is on the parcel search at the courthouse, there's nothing we can do about that, she's gonna have to take care of that.
Okay. All right.
One thing, any additions? Do you want the city crews to clean them all up? Or you want to try to bid these up to somebody? We've been discussing that too.
Well, if, if it's a, are the guy, the guys aren't swamped right now, right, the street projects are done?
Street crews kinda busy.
What are they doing?
They're catching up with, um, I mean, fixing some things on the brick streets that didn't quite match up to the new curb lines, those, that's been taking up some time. And just, it's a, it doesn't seem like a busy time, but it's, they're, they're all over the place. It's, it's, I don't know, I just see it as, uh, sometimes it's a better option to have a third party come in and, and clean it up. I mean, that's just, that's a, we can still, we can-
So who, who would we hire?
Oh, there's, there's, there's three or four construction companies around here that will do that.
Okay. Well, as long as we're talking about property, what about the one on Main, May Street?
It'll probably just, we'll probably put it out for bids after the thirtieth.
After the thirtieth?
They've done nothing with it at all.
Okay. So after the thirtieth, they'll take bids?
But I think another one is broke out there.
Yeah, there's, there's one above, there's one over there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the one at May is, you're gonna bid out?
I'm sure that's, they haven't approached us here. I see them at Walgreens off and on, they haven't approached me there either, so.
Is, is there another property that we condemned, or is that it?
Just those two, right?
Just the two.
I mean, which one, tell me more, you want, you wanna do a couple more at a time, or?
So just twelve oh five and this three oh, three oh eight?
Not twelve, twelve oh five is not condemned.
Twelve oh five is a nuisance property, it's not a condemnation.
Three oh eight May, and thirteen ten May.
Thirteen ten, I just had the wrong, I had the wrong address, yeah, thirteen ten May. Okay. All right.
And those, we'll probably, we'll put them out for bids to tear down.
Okay.
Unless, unless you want to take that garage down, if it ain't cleaned up. I mean, garage is that part due, but-
You're talking, you're talking about-
That's the garage at three oh eight.
Yeah, we can probably take that down, don't you think? If the, if the, if the, uh, trailer has glass?
Huh?
You mean, if the trailer-
Well, the trailer, we'll probably just bid that, if that don't go.
Okay.
Yeah, Gary's, Gary's like the rest of us, hey, you make time for whatever you gotta do, so. Not there any things to do, but there are things come up, and you'll just do it, so.
Yeah.
Are there other properties you're thinking that we should be working on? Well, I think we should continue. Since we've finally got started on this.
On May?
One at a time.
Oh, okay. I got, I got a couple I can do right there.
What's our demolition budget per year?
I mean, right there, you gotta figure out what you want to spend.
Yeah.
Or put down six or eight, ten thousand dollars for a-
A tuition's not cheap, or anything, does it?
No.
Nope. I'm just gonna have everybody more than that, especially if all these is full of stuff. I mean, they got a lot of tonnies in the hall, it's just the structure, and it's not so bad.
Yeah. Well, we have to do it, because we need to follow through, complete the journey, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only way you're gonna clean Marysville up.
Did you have a question, Dave?
Well, the one with Hers, she is very upset, and she says she has tried to get that straightened out, and she can't get it straightened out, so I don't know what's going on, so.
Well, legally, we, we have to send it to her, because otherwise, they could, they could come back on us and go, "You didn't notify me, I was on the thing."
I know, but she says she's trying to straighten it out with the state and everything, she can't get her name off of it, so I don't know what's going on, but she jumped me the other day about it, and she's very upset.
We have members up here, and she just can't read by it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is, is the consent agenda, there's two items, bank resolutions and convention and tourism requests.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Let's see. I had any questions? I did not. Did anyone have any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayo. The next item is the appropriations ordinance.
Move to approve appropriation ordinance thirty-six eighty-five, an amount of five-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention a couple of the large items that are included, uh, a payment to AHRS, and that is, uh, two areas on Twentieth Street, uh, and North, Twentieth, uh, north of Carolina, and then, um, north of North Street to the airport, and that amount is, oh, ADA grants also. That amount is two-hundred-and-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. We're paying CES, this isn't a big amount, three-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars to do the con, concrete testing, um, at Hometown Lumber and on Twentieth Street, and seven-hundred blocks of Carolina, in hopes that we don't have the failures like we did Hometown Drive and Keystone Road with, uh, Keystone area, uh, concrete. And, let's see.
You, you said seven-hundred block of Carolina, or you meant, meant?
Um.
Down there, Third and Fourth?
Seven-hundred block of, well, I don't know if that's seven-hundred, should that be four-hundred?
Three-hundred, four-hundred?
It says seven-hundred, but, yeah.
Okay. I was, I was gonna say, I don't think we're working on seven-hundred.
And then, um, we've made another part, a payment to Larson Construction, and that's on waterline phase number two, an amount of one-hundred-thousand-four-hundred-and-four dollars. Plus, we've done a number of transfers per budget.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Pippi?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Ayo.
Ayo. All right. Austin, you're up.
All right. First item on my report is mosquito fogging options. Dale assembled a few different options for you guys to look at, uh, as far as truck base fogging, and he also threw in there a backpack, uh, fogger, uh, just for you guys to, to consider, if, if that's the way you want to go. He also found some arguments against, uh, fogging as well, uh, but, so I included that information. I also got today, uh, three responses from, uh, a couple different communities. They, they said, two of them said they had Clark equipment, so one's a Clark Hooger, uh, for a fogger, and the other one didn't say what, what type it was, but I've heard of, uh, Clark Grizzly, uh, as well. It's a brand name sold by Bandeese, uh, Abeline, I believe. And then, uh, the third one had a London Fogger, uh, nine dash ten, uh, ULB, which is a low volume, uh, I think each of these are low volume. And then, one of them had it for fifteen years, has had it for fifteen years, they paid six thousand dollars, uh, fifteen years ago. Larned just bought theirs recently, uh, and they paid ten thou, or, they didn't pay this, but they had a trade-in, but overall cost was ten thousand nine hundred. And then the London Fogger, uh, was eight thousand three hundred. The top two, uh, two of the cities used Biomist, uh, which was shown to not be healthy for, I read the, the MSDS, and that they weren't healthy to bees, which is why, uh, the, the chemical we chose. And I didn't get to read completely on, on the third cities, but they, they used, involved a, a Bowlier, uh, four dash four, as their chemical.
And is that a harsher one as well?
I haven't, I didn't get to go into detail, he said that at the end of the day, uh, but I had that on my phone, trying to read it.
So where's the chemical that you're recommending?
Uh, the MSDS.
This, this one?
Uh, let's see. We included the MSDS in there.
Is this one?
That one, yeah.
Okay.
And that's the high-
Austin, have you talked with our county agent at all, extension agent?
Why did you ask that?
I just-
Do they spray?
Well, what kind of recommendation she would have from K-State?
Oh, our extension agent, okay.
Is anybody-
If any.
Does anybody ever inventory this town to see where the foggers at they had? Do we still have a fogger?
Dale has a propane, um, uh, system that he could do small areas with. I was told that he, um, when they had, when you guys had a, uh, Public Works Director, uh, they had, he had done research into it, but it was dropped, and they never had, he said they never had, he doesn't remember a fogger.
I was wondering if they still had one or not?
Yeah, I don't, we don't have one.
So going back to that, um, the list that, that you did earlier, it's not in here, but, um, almost everybody did.
Well, those are the only, the ones-
Ones that responded.
The ones that responded, yes.
Yeah.
And there was one that said they didn't, uh, because, uh, they felt, uh, actually the, they said after nine eleven, people were, um, afraid of spraying things into things into the air, so that that kind of prevented that. So those, the one, the stuff that I did put out was mainly the ones that responded. So if they had foggers, they responded.
So they go out at night?
They did, one of them said they went out at night. Another one, I did ask if people complained about it, and sometimes, some towns they did, and basically, they just overlooked those people, kind of gave them a warning that they were going to be out, but...
So do they, do they notify the area of town that's going to spray, or do they cover the whole town in one night, or what do they do?
Most of these towns are small, so they cover them in one night. So that's, they get that through.
Did they say how often they had to spray?
It varied. Some do twice a week, not twice a week, but twice a month. Some did like twice a year, depending, or depended on mosquitoes. So that was, it varied per town, and, yeah, that's...
I kind of doubt the efficacy of it with some of the areas where we have mosquito problems most aren't very accessible, where they aren't, but you can't drive really by them, ponding areas or other...
Well, the city park is horrible.
Yeah.
Right.
The whole west side where the drainage ditch runs through there.
But we still have standing water down there. I went down there today.
Until there's a hard freeze, they won't completely be gone.
Yeah, but as long as we keep the little donuts in them.
That helps.
It helps a lot.
Anything.
It does.
And just people doing their due diligence to keep standing water.
Well, like that Gail Hepburn who was here and said her son got West Nile. That was kind of a wake-up call. And then the ones that they carry, what kind of areas would they do that? The backpack ones?
So I would say, let's say you're walking through between the pool and that pathway through the park, you'd probably walk through, you wouldn't drive through that area.
Down in the community gardens area.
Through that pathway, I'd see the backpack, you'd spray the tree areas and all that stuff.
But it makes me extremely nervous. You realize you have an employee that has this that's not good for you, surrounding them.
Yeah.
As they have it on their backpack.
You've got it. I would not do that.
It's not, it's not waiver.
Just speaking from being in the co-op world with the farmers who use spray and all that stuff in grain bins, I would not do that.
Well, so, yeah, the better choice is having it on the truck?
And you can't get a lot of places.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna be limited to the streets with that, which, I mean, that's kind of what some of this negative argument has, is you're gonna, you're gonna just get the front of houses and their trees, and you're not gonna get the back where they have pools of water, a pool that attracts all these mosquitoes. You're not gonna get...
In a lot of cases, yeah, that's where there's probably more standing water.
Yeah, I got a, I got a bird bath that I need to dump out. I mean, that's in my backyard.
Well, maybe we just do, get it for our common areas, like our parks, our fields and things like that.
I mean, that, I mean, that's enough.
They did say that if you don't get underneath the leaves where they sit, they won't die. You absolutely have to get them flying in the air or on top.
Maybe it won't rain anymore. You don't have to worry about it till next year.
It would have to be in the evenings then, or at night when they're flying.
Yeah, and it can't be when they're, you know, it has to directly hit them. So if they're sitting up in a tree...
Well, I just think you should, we should have the discussion now rather than wait till next year when it's bad again. So it's kind of just what you guys want to do.
I'm equally unhappy about the idea of the chemical being sprayed in general, let alone, even if it was really effective. I don't think it's that effective. I'm as nervous about that as I am West Nile. I don't really care for the idea. I think preventative measures are probably, otherwise are probably safer.
In Holden, they did it streets and alleys at night, and sure didn't have the mosquitoes like here.
Well, all I know is that I went over to talk to Mary Wasson at the tennis court, and I got 20 bites within one minute, and the kids, they were all spraying the kids before they got on the tennis courts. It was horrible.
But this year, we had a lot of rain. What's to say we'll have it next year?
I don't remember a decade, and it's never been as bad as this year.
See, I don't remember that, living in the West End down there, they have never been as bad as it were this year.
So are you just gonna wait and see if they're bad again next year?
No, that's the thing, if you don't, if you don't buy it, yeah, then they get bad and it's too late. You'll never get it in time.
Well, can we buy the donuts and hand them out?
We have the donuts.
And then hand them out to citizens?
Well, can we just, how about we put, put shots in case of enforcing standing water rules? I mean, we've got that.
But then you have to go, we have a curb and gutter that isn't smooth, that's, we have standing water in. How can you tell somebody, they have to get rid of standing water, when we have standing water in our potholes and things like that?
Those shouldn't last very long, I wouldn't think. Plus, the pothole should have motor oil from the cars coming.
To, basically, you said Holden sprays or fogs?
They did when we lived there.
They are half the square miles, so, I mean, it's just, we are a large town for small.
But their population's larger than, do they still?
They're about the same.
Do they still fog?
I don't know.
I would say, imagine there's less and less places do it. They used to do it, I mean, my mom remembers in Oklahoma when she was a kid, kids would go out and run in the fog because they drive through in the afternoon, and kids thought it was the greatest thing. I mean, of course, they did all sorts of things back then. I'm distrustful of it. I don't necessarily think it's the worst thing in the world, but I'm, I'd err against it.
You know, people have wood fall. I have asthma, you know. Who says, and there's a lot of asthma around here. I was really surprised when I moved down here. A lot of kids have breathing problems, adults have breathing problems, you know, you're gonna, might run into that, too. You know, I ended up...
Now that she's gone.
I ended up with the West Nile, and I fought it for a year, and it was absolutely horrible. Horrible. But, you know, what are you gonna do? You know, animals are affected, humans are affected. Are you gonna put a chemical out there that's gonna harm somebody, possibly? Have you looked at chemicals that are not, are not gonna affect the bees?
That's the one that we have.
There's some research that some of the bee safe stuff isn't necessarily bee safe. If you, I mean, there's a reason that bees are dying off.
This Biomist, I read, and it specifically, actually, it specifically said, "Do not spray on flowering, anything," because it will, or anywhere where the bees are at, because it will affect them. So, I mean, yeah, and there's multiple cities using the Biomist.
So what's the feeling, council?
I found this one that I gave Austin. I don't even think he mentioned this one, that was like $1,600 or something like this, that you can put on the back of a, well, I think he gave them to you guys, too.
This one?
Yeah. That you can put on the back of a pickup or something, too, that wouldn't cost us as much as the bigger ones, so. I think everybody got a copy of it, and it's made in the United, and it's made in the United States, so.
It says backpack, though.
Well, yeah, but it says it can be put on the back of a pickup or ATV or something. It wouldn't be as expensive as the more expensive ones, so.
Could you mount it to the back of a mower and like run the mower into those areas?
Yeah, I've never been a big fan of like, yeah, when you see guys spraying with like a ATV or something, and you're thinking, well, the wind's blowing, all that stuff is getting on you.
Well, it said it can be put on the back of a pickup.
At least considering those trucks.
I mean, that's fine and all, but this little container right here is, if you're gonna be out spraying stuff, you're gonna be going back and being really inefficient.
But, but you could still put it, you could still go in places where you couldn't go with the big one.
Right, right.
Like, you know.
Like parks and stuff, yeah, that's true.
Which is where we maybe need it more than what we do in the great big areas, so, you know, we maybe don't need to spray the whole town.
Yeah, it just, when I was down at the city park, it was miserable, so I was just... But your council gets to decide. What would you like to do?
I'd like to wait till next year to see if we're gonna have a wet summer.
Okay.
I really don't think we need to do it right now. The mosquitoes are done this year.
Okay, so should we just no action right now and keep the information in case we decide we get a lot of rain in the spring?
Action rain.
I get eaten up by jiggers going out in my yard, working on the flowers. The mosquitoes don't bother me, but gnats and jiggers get me, so, you know, I mean...
It's the West Nile and stuff like that.
I relate that, but...
Nothing worries us.
All right, we will just move on then, and we won't take any action on that right now. Go ahead, Austin.
Okay, next one is a salt shed bidding request. I did some changes to it per, I heard discussing previously, changed it to a 40 by 50 salt shed, made adjustments to the driveway, and where the location was gonna be at, timeframe. I set it for a next year project, spring, summer, sometime, but no later, completed no later than August 31st of 2019. So basically, the outline, it's, the size of the salt shed is the 40 by 50, and what they're supposed to be using, and then the floor, the salt shed driveway, and then them installing, bidding separate, not separately, but lining out separately in the bid, how much it's gonna cost for them to install the roof, and see if it's, if it's worth us paying them or just doing it ourselves.
So shouldn't that say northeast corner?
Should be southwest.
Southwest.
Northeast corner of Third and Elm.
Northeast to the intersection or...
North, yeah, it should be, it should be northeast on the intersection, yeah.
Northeast corner of Third and Elm?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and this, and this, you have 142 feet. Wouldn't 40 by 50 times 40 times 50 be 180?
That's if you did four walls.
Oh, so you're taking out how many doors? Oh, you're only doing...
Doing three walls, completely open on the front.
You're doing 50 and 50?
So, yeah, 50, 50, and 40, plus the corners, so.
So one foot on each side?
One foot on each side.
Okay, so that makes sense.
Yep.
And, and you said there's six pilasters?
Yeah.
They're gonna go on the corners?
No, they go in the middle of the wall.
So there's two on each side of the three walls?
Yeah, and that's the same, that's the same amount that they use for the contractor I use to, to put the numbers together. They use two on each wall for that big 60 by 80. So I think two on each wall is gonna be pretty good.
Okay, they put them in the middle of the wall rather than at the corners, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Interesting. Okay. You guys have any questions about that? Those were all my questions.
I do have one question. I don't see anything in this contract, because I've talked around to some people about trying, as soon as they want to take those trees out just for the wood, and they're a little, little scared that there might be a lot of hardware in them, so they've changed their mind, and they don't want it, so we're gonna have to clean that up before you can start working.
I got some feelers out. I asked Gudenkauf. He said he's had people bothering him about trees, so hopefully, they're gonna contact me. He didn't tell me who they were. He said the...
Who is bothering him about trees?
About, they wanna buy trees.
They want the trees.
Yes, they want the trees.
Well, that'd be good.
Yes, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that...
There's no hardware in those trees, is there?
I hope, I mean, of all the trees, I don't, I mean...
Jerry's laughing at me.
Around a shop, or, yeah, somebody's always nailing something into a tree.
There's nails, probably.
The number one thing they're concerned about is, so somebody might have pinned a clothesline to a tree and made that. So somebody's backyard, their trees could have been used, and they put nails and stuff.
We're talking about...
Ours wouldn't be used like that.
Not necessarily, but there's a lot of junk around, and the trees could have absorbed right in with them.
Like a fence post cleaned up against it.
Yeah, I can say if they stayed it, I've seen T-Pos.
Round them?
Oh, yeah. There's a T-, unless they took it out at the corner of 10th and Elm, there's one with a T-Pos in it.
Surprise!
So that's what they're afraid of when that, but, like I said, I talked to Gudenkauf. He said it's, multiple people have been bothering him. He was gonna give the one who's been bothering them the most the, so.
Okay, well, the other thing is about the cleanup before the construction could start. Who's doing that?
We'll clean it up.
The city will?
Yeah.
Okay.
I read where, I think Kent was saying he was moving some pipe into the storeroom.
Yeah, yeah, we're fully prepared. We know we need to get that all moved around and compacted, especially after those trees go. It definitely needs to be compacted, and because we don't want a salt shed with a, with a caved-in floor. We know that, what that's gonna, yeah.
So you take the tree out, and you're gonna clean up the ground and then do the project?
Yeah.
And we'll have time to do that?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have any other questions for him? You wanna just have a motion to proceed with the salt project bid?
Move to approve the salt shedding project.
Oh, changing it to northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Northeast corner.
Northeast corner.
Of the intersection.
Of the intersection.
Of the southwest corner of the property, but northeast corner of the intersection.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ayo.
All right. You have one more, Austin?
And then I'll just talk about, we are hiring two individuals to replace, to fill the open vacancies. Deb Schwinneman is going to take over as payroll clerk. She's got 30 years of office experience, including payroll, IT, and all that stuff. So we move, we put her at $15 an hour, which is above the starting rate of, which is, you would normally use. I gotta pull that back up.
Range nine?
Yeah. Where did I step on? Sorry about this. So, yeah, which, normally, the payroll clerk would start at 1321, but with all her experience, I felt it necessary to offer her the $15 an hour. We're also hiring Heather Felty as the utility clerk. She has experience at state-level government and working with welfare benefit people. We're starting her at the base rate at 1386.
Well, I appreciate you explaining that in your notes.
Yep.
I, you guys have any questions about what you just, I read in the highlights that you have our parade ready, we're parade-ready.
Yes, waiting on the candy. I ordered the candy.
So you have the candy, the squirrel?
Yep.
Okay, so thank you for taking care of that. The squirrel name, I just want to know, I wanted to know, you said you wanted to name it after Alonso somebody?
Cotrell, yes.
Cotrell.
Cotrell.
So can you, can you call it Mayor Alonso, so people understand who Alonso is?
I think that's, that's true. Well, I'll see if I can, I can...
Fit that on that.
I will, I mean, it was just, because when I first told Barb, or the people handling the squirrel, what the name was gonna be, I got the exact response that I wanted. Why Alonso? And that's, that in my mind goes, they want to know more. And I, and I agree with you, you could probably put Mayor on there.
Just Mayor Alonso.
Mayor Alonso.
And then we can lead into the question.
Right.
First mayor.
Well, not, he wasn't the first mayor, it's just, I don't know if there was a, we don't know if there was a mayor before him, because he, the year, the year that he became mayor was like a couple years into incorporation of the city. But this is the first one the historic society could find a newspaper clipping about in 18, I forget what year, 1870s, so.
I like Mayor Alonso better. Do you like that better?
I'm fine, I'm completely fine.
Okay, that's my only change in that. I'm anxious to see it.
It's awesome.
Now, there's one thing about that, this Cotrell name is pretty predominant right here in town. There's a lot of people...
It is a historic name.
It could be that it could be Mayor Cotrell, too, instead because of the people that live here that has that name. There's not a lot of Alonzos around here when you're talking about somebody's first name.
It is a unique name. I mean, that's, I think that sticks it out, and I'd really encourage it if you're gonna...
It's like that.
So how big's a plaque?
It's, if you put any more on it, it's...
So you're saying we can either get Mayor Alonso, or we can get Alonso Cotrell, but we can't get Mayor Alonso Cotrell?
No, I wouldn't do that. It's gonna make the font really small.
Mayor Alonso.
Mayor Alonso. I think that poses a question.
Yeah.
Okay, you all right with that?
I'm completely fine with that.
Austin, I had a question. You mentioned you were not ordering as many donuts.
I'm ordering...
But if it's nice...
So here's, I'm not ordering, I'm ordering, I'm ordering the special, the stuff...
The black squirrel donuts.
The black squirrel.
And the glazed.
Yes. Okay, so this is what I'm, this is what I'm doing. I'm, Empty Cup is creating donut holes that look like acorns, and 300 servings of those. So I took...
On top of the donut.
On top of the slightly reduced number of donuts. I think we're gonna make it through. Just judging by our notes from the past, I think we'll make it through the night.
Get your donuts early.
Yeah.
Well, if it's a nice night, we will go through a lot more. Last year, we were in a horrible location. We had the north wind. People didn't even want to walk over to where we were serving the donuts.
Yeah, but the year before was really nice, and we, we still had donuts left over, even with the record-breaking crowd.
Okay, well, we don't want to waste them. We, we can give them out when we run out. They know we're there.
Yep. I just, I reduce, not in proportion to, compared to last year. So we're gonna have more than we had last year.
I like it better than giving, going around and trying to find places to take dozens of donuts. I don't like that.
Yep.
So I'd rather have run out and know that we serve for two and a half hours than to have all those excesses.
I think we'll...
And we have acorns.
I just remember right now, probably two years ago.
From our notes, it looked like we had a, some leftover from, from two years ago. I got it.
It must have been hidden.
But, okay, no, well, I think...
And you know what we gave out? Remember, we gave out paper, we use paper towels, and they work better than napkins.
Yeah, going off all along. We keep a note every year.
Okay, I just remember that. All right, that's only, and the other thing, you've mentioned a couple times in your highlights about cell phone towers. Is that a revenue stream?
Yes. They said they would lease land, and it'd probably be about $5,000, $6,000 a year.
And so they're gonna put a tower up by the Feld Field?
Feld Field. They're proposing. They're not, they're not just gonna go and put it up.
And you think it's gonna look okay?
I think...
If you're at Feld Field... If you're at Feld Field alive?
I don't-
It, well-
Cell phone towers always look-
It's a tower with, yeah.
Is the one that looks like a fake tree?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Fake tree.
They said that's expensive.
Well, put it up.
I know, I know. You guys, you can, you guys can deny it.
Are the homeowners?
Because this is not a, a done deal.
Where exactly they want to put it at Feld Field?
Outfield Fence, that cutoff corner, the very back.
Outfield Fence?
Yep.
Centerfield?
It's outside Centerfield.
By the Legion?
Like right behind the new scoreboard?
It's not behind the scoreboard.
At Feld Field.
Where, where it used, where there used to be a flagpole out there.
Is that going to interfere with you was talking about firehouse?
The fire?
Nope. They've been planning alongside of the firehouse. They, they know, because David's been working with them, too, showing them exactly how and where.
Do we get to hang antennas and stuff on there for free?
You guys can negotiate that.
So it's on the west east or, it's on the west or the, I mean, the east or the north?
Have the homeowners in that area then?
South, I mean, south.
Are they okay with it?
Haven't, haven't talked to them yet.
It'll be right?
Right.
What'd you just ask about? Homeowners?
Yeah. See, it'll, yeah, it'll be way out, way out here.
Be right off 20s.
Right there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, all the homes are up here and there. It'll be, they said about 50 feet tall, depending on-
A very tall tower.
Yeah.
It's available.
Yeah.
Is that, is that to worry about the airplanes?
I've already pre-checked with our engineer and then they, they said it was fine. They said they would have to do a pre-check as well before they even put anything together to book, before they can approve.
Probably underneath what they're worried about.
So that's, they usually put these cell towers inside city limits. Is that normal?
It's always fought over and every time they put them in, yeah.
So, and again, this has to come before you guys and I wanted you guys to know what was going on. They'll show you, they're going to write up the plans, they're going to write up the agreement and you're going to see everything before it comes. But they said they pay us a lease.
So why'd they pick that property?
They, they had a square in the city where ideally where a cell tower would go, the initial square. Nothing in, inside that square was feasible, the only feasible spot. They were looking at Durgitz Park, not exactly the best-case scenario. So we were like, we kind of guided them around where there was some open space and where there was our land that we could definitely say, put it there. And they liked Feld Field the most.
Can we put it behind Headstone Hall?
Um, I don't, they didn't say they wanted that. I mean, that, this is, they pointed to the locations they were looking at. That's how this whole thing went.
Well, Headstone Hall's not too far from where.
But it's, it's all about elevation. That elevation might have gone downhill.
This is probably higher grounds.
Yeah.
Sure.
Who's our cell phone provider for the city of Marysville?
And who's this with?
You guys say it. But they're the initial investor. They're the initial investor. More than likely another cell phone provider will come in and latch on to this tower.
It's immobile.
So they, they didn't want it like near our water tower, our M Water Tower?
But we can kind of direct them on where to put them.
We used to have one on the water tower here and then they took all of them off. Well, that company went broke and they took them all off because they said it was hard on the water tower.
Yeah, I didn't want them on the water tower, but I was trying to think of a high location, in-town, kind of obscure.
They, well, they, I mean, like I said, they drew a box that was like this. They took, let's see, get my bearings. It was like, this is where they wanted the water tower, somewhere in this location.
There's a cell tower?
Yeah. They wanted the cell tower right here. So they, wherever we could put it within this box, that was the money spot. Well, we couldn't put anything in here, so they kind of like, eh, that would be okay. Or there was a, we were looking up around where we, the oil-
Oil tank.
Oil tank and stuff like that. They looked at that. And Jerry came out and kind of threatened her, saying we're going to put this cell phone tower right across the street.
Jerry likes the red blinky light.
Said we put a light that shined right into her window, so she knew it was there. But yeah, that's how they came in negotiating, saying this is our box and we want it here.
Like you and that, so there's not neighbors on that side.
They, they looked at all of the city property that we could, we showed them, so.
But we, we could completely deny having it in the city.
Yes.
Or we could just negotiate really, really well.
Or we could negotiate where we want it.
Then if they don't meet our terms, we don't have to sell, in other words.
Well, actually, there is, because if they do put a tower less than 60 feet, so 59 or below, there's no zoning requirements. And if it's on somebody else's property, we probably can't do anything about it.
Can we, can we put it out with the dump?
They, they, I think their idea was to get as many residents as possible. And that, like I said, they, they went in and said, these are, this is, if you get it here-
The dump's kind of high property.
Yeah. So what you're telling me is that if I own land and they want to put it on there, I can let them put it at my house.
Yes.
And the city, it's nothing.
Right.
And we can't stop it.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's, unless I, unless I'm mistaken, because we don't have any regulations against it. And telecommunications is kind of an unfettered thing.
Is this, is this a guy wide tire list?
What?
There's some guy wires.
So it has to be pretty open.
I would want it.
We wouldn't allow people to put a 50-foot cell tower in their backyard.
The, the towers, the towers that we have in our ULDC are 60-feeter.
I'll put up with it.
And that's the only thing we regulate.
The only thing, well, I think we need to change that. We don't want huge towers throughout town.
I'm surprised the grade school isn't talking-
What if they're pumping oil?
That's different.
Didn't count me in.
And it's not 60 feet high. On a serious note, I don't think we want to allow people to have 60-foot towers in their yards.
I mean, this is the first I've seen, because cell phone towers are usually 130-foot.
It's a little amazing that I can be regulated on building a deck and not a cell phone tower in my yard.
Exactly.
I think we do have, if I remember correctly, there's an ordinance out there about people putting wind towers in their yard, but I'd have to look, because that would have been in the 70s when that started.
Oh.
And I'd have to go back and look. It's a really, really old one.
Everyone used to have 50, 60-foot antennas in the west end of town down there.
Well, do we want, do we want to have a committee look at this? What, what do you, how do you guys want to proceed with this? To make sure we're happy with this, or?
Let's get, and I mean, if we get the information, and I don't know how long it takes for them to get the information, I mean, that's, it probably, I mean, that'd probably be a good idea to send a committee or something.
I think that some committee should look at all the potentials and have, and bring back and make a recommendation, not just to take, I don't know if I'd like one behind Feld Field. So, I mean, I'm just one person, but-
Maybe when we see the design, what they propose.
Well, why don't we go ahead? What committee would we send that to, Austin? Let's see, committee. Let's see, cell tower committee.
In the middle of the city.
You want to just send it to Finance and Admin?
Straight to me.
Well, I know.
Look at properties?
Zoning committee.
Can you read that? Go ahead.
Judy just brought something up. Can I read it for a second? You're exposed to 100 million times more electromagnetic radiation than your grandparents were. And part of the reason is radiation from the cell phone towers and microwave antennas. Human population centers are flooded with massive amounts of powerful wireless microwave radiation. Cell phone towers emit high-frequency radio waves or microwaves that can travel as far as 45 minutes over level terrain, 45 miles over level terrain. And the closer you are, the greater the danger. The health effects are headaches, memory loss, cardiovascular stress, low sperm count, birth defects, and cancer.
You knew that?
No, she looked it up.
Well, because there's a lot of fight in California over cell towers. And that's why they are in the forest, looking like trees.
Yeah.
They're not in towns.
Put it up there. There's lots of little kids in that area with the two ball fields.
You're, you're within a very populated area if you put it in, in city limits. That's why the dump, great. But you're also, I mean-
Well, that's why I was suggesting other properties. But why not, we'll send it to the Finance and Admin Committee, look at other properties, kind of research that as well. Is that all right?
Can we, can we put it out by the other water tower? Because that's my land out there. I mean, and granted, there's the hotel out there.
I was going to say, and I guess, well, like apartments out there, they could find it. Did we, would we have to have a hearing on something like this?
There's no, nothing.
There's a have to and a should at work, I mean.
We probably should have a hearing on it. But, I mean, I'm just trying to think, the dump is probably the, although there are some people that live near the dump. I didn't, I mean, this quote on your parade.
No, I don't think you're going to negotiate. I just-
I just don't see what's in it for us. I mean, we create a hazardous, I mean, a hazardous ISO, that's a small price for them to pay.
Five thousand, yeah.
I mean, am I wrong?
Well, just, I mean, hallucinating, hallucinating, you know, having feelings of, you know, illness. I don't know, Todd.
I don't think you're going to convince them to move it. I think they were, like I said, they, they looked at all these different properties.
They looked at the whole city.
Yeah.
Basically.
Yeah, they had, well, yes.
Well, the only other place, when you think about it, is out on that road to Ferry Park out there. You could stick it out there.
It's low, though.
It's too low.
I know, it's low, but I'm trying to think of a way for you-
What about by the lagoons? I mean, it's a little ways west.
Ah, there you go.
It's up high. Nobody wants to hang out by the lagoon anyway.
There's already a cell tower.
Not far, to the east, off of East River.
So you can't have them close by?
Why would, they already have one.
You think it's theirs?
Is that theirs out there? I think they have stuff on it, yeah.
I thought that was a Verizon tower out there.
I think that they all-
Well, they all, they all lease up to each other.
It's here.
Right.
I'm talking about it. That's, well, it's almost a mile.
Yeah, but they want it closer to town.
Yeah, but it's good size. You can see town from it.
Cures some boring cancer.
If it's going to burn.
I don't know. I, I don't, I don't.
I would, I'd probably look at either accepting or denying what they want. I mean, we could ask them if they'd look somewhere else, but they're kind of set in their ways.
What about by the dam? We'll be on that.
Right in the middle. There's space there.
I can't have a building-
The dam? The dam area, that's heavily reinforced or rock out dropping.
We only own that little piece. They need like a 50 by 50 or something like that.
That's why they say you're not supposed to run around with a cell phone to your ear all the time. It's not good for you. You know?
Well, had no, had no plan to talk about this that much, just trying to find out more about it. So with that being said, if they are set on that space, what is the decision of council?
Well, I think we need more information.
I'm not in favor of it, but I'm not, I'm not going to shoot it down out of hand. I'll let them put together something if they want to convince me.
If they want to find something a little, I'm not saying like completely out of town, but if they want to put it, like we said, I'd-
Austin's saying that it's probably that space or nothing.
Well, Austin, pretty much. Like, because they came in, I hate to repeat this, but they came in with a desired area. This is where we want it.
So why are other towns telling them no?
Here's, here's the thing, too.
No property.
The, the spot out there by Kramer Royal that we already own, can you pitch them that there used to be a radio station based there with a tower? Isn't that a pretty good location for reaching people? There was a tower there.
There you go.
That's a big piece of ground we're going to do anything with.
I guess it's just-
And it had a tower on it.
There's also a lot of people who live around it.
There's still potential, too.
But yes, I get it.
No, not necessarily.
You have, you have the Keating Drive and you have the little apartments now.
Same you're living, yeah.
I don't think there's any less people out there.
There's probably just many of them.
You've got a lot of people out there.
Just a good ball and a piece of ground we own, it's high, it had a tower on it.
It is high.
It had a, you know, historically had a tower on it, you're saying?
But, I mean, you can ask them.
Maybe the neighbors are all US soldiers.
See, if they're flexible.
Stoke, I don't know.
If they're not flexible, we'll still consider it. Is that true?
They already don't.
I'd at least look at the information.
Okay. All right. See if they're flexible.
Those look like a palm tree.
That would be nice.
Tropical.
But they look like redwood that try.
All right.
Tours attract.
Okay, we're going to move on now. Hello. You still have something?
I had a couple things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. So first thing is to think about what we're going to do for the December 24th meeting. That is the last meeting in December and that is Christmas Eve. And I didn't think-
Oh, no.
Yeah. So, I mean, the thought was maybe we could have a meeting on-
Wednesday.
The Friday before.
And then reconvene, don't end the meeting, reconvene like on the Wednesday or Thursday so we can do a last ordinance. We probably cannot get an ordinance out fast enough for all the year-end bills. So.
So you're saying move it up to the 21st and then have another one the following week?
Right, which you would probably just make ordinance, just another ordinance.
You don't want to make it the 31st?
Well, we-
Is that the first to holiday?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm just processing this.
I mean, I would think you're going to either, you probably want it on the 26th or the 27th. That's up to you.
For the 21st.
To do the second. I mean, you could move the whole meeting there, I guess, but-
On a Friday night? You want to do a Friday night?
Kind of like a bath, one a week.
It's just, it's actually, we could make it any time of day we want.
It'd work very nice, you know?
Anytime out of your two.
We just need five people to show up Friday night. To do the second part.
The first part, the first date.
Year and a half.
The 21st.
Okay, hello. You guys are talking about-
The 20th on the Thursday.
It's a character.
Okay.
I don't know.
We're, on the first meeting, that's initially on the 24th, we move it to the 20th, Thursday the 20th?
Well, if we-
That's a whole meeting.
Better.
Well, yeah. Because if you put it on the 21st, I mean, the 24th, if people go out of town, that's Christmas Eve and then Christmas Day. I don't know.
Like the 27th or 28th.
The whole meeting?
Yeah, and you don't have to do it once.
But we have to get the rest of the, the year-end stuff. That's, that's-
That's why he's saying wait till the 27th or 28th.
Oh, 27th, oh, okay.
Yeah, do it and then we can do it all on the same day.
Is, is everybody going to be in town between Christmas and New Year's?
Sure. I will.
I am.
I don't think I would be around.
I don't think I would be either.
I'm always around. Five, then we'd have five, Terry, will you be here, Don?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Six, so we'd have six.
So do you want to make it the 27th, Thursday night, the 27th? No?
The 28th.
The 28th, Friday night?
That's Friday.
Can we do it like 2:00?
No, that, no, wait. We just changed it so it's a full meeting.
Full meeting.
It's no longer.
How long's a whole meeting gonna be?
Well, it depends how long, like tonight.
We don't, there won't be comedy involved.
So, I mean, if you want it that Friday night, that's fine. I'm just saying it's Friday night and it's a regular meeting. It probably lasts from 7:00 to 9:00 or 7:00 to 10:00.
Dead.
Or 5:00 to 7:00.
Do we have to wait till 7:00? Can we be here at 5:00?
That's what I say, 5:00 to 7:00 or something.
5:00 to 7:00. Why don't we just do 5:00 to 7:00?
Give us a couple minutes, man.
So you want December 28th at 5:15?
Friday, Friday 28th.
Friday 28th.
At a full meeting.
Trying.
Right?
Yes.
December 28th.
Just the one meeting.
How's that, Gina?
We can, yeah.
5:00 PM or 5:15?
5:15.
5:15 for Kevin.
I would go ahead and make a motion. Uh, I'd also ask, uh, is somebody going to be in town on the 24th? I ca- I need one council member.
Yeah, I'm here.
Show up at City Hall, 7:00, just in case somebody shows up, cause this is legally required. Tell whoever shows up that we rescheduled the meeting.
We will publish it.
We'll publish it, but we have to have one council member be here.
On the 24th, even though it's a holiday?
Yes.
Even though it's a holiday?
Well, it's not, it's not technically a holiday for us, but that's the next question.
On Christmas Eve?
It's a religious holiday.
7:00.
Okay.
Yeah, 7:00.
What time the meeting resumes?
Yeah, and, and you go, uh, we rescheduled the meeting for.
Okay, so, uh, I need a motion to reschedule the December 24th meeting to December 28th at 5:15. I need that motion. So moved? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado, all right. So now it's the 28th. What's your next one?
Uh, can we make December 24th a city holiday?
Bobby's coming in.
Why?
So everybody can have the day off.
It's a Monday.
Cause they travel.
Makes it a little easier.
Yeah.
Traveling.
Cause we got, we come back, uh, it's Monday and then we have a, a Christmas, uh, so it's, it's, that's the question that is usually.
If it were a Wednesday, I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of Tuesday, but I can see the logic with Christmas being a Tuesday.
Yeah, I probably would not.
Wouldn't it just be for this year?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, we have a.
This is a case-by-case basis.
It's case-by-case basis, yeah, because technically it's not a holiday for us at all.
Well, it usually isn't.
Yeah.
No, that's what I mean.
Well, then are you gonna want New Year's Eve off, too?
No.
I mean, we.
Um, maybe the 30th?
Oh, well, I guess you can give them either or. I think they, you should give them the 24th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then have them work the 30th. They can always take a holiday day.
New Year's Eve isn't as much of a travel.
They'll be ready to take an extra day break by then, Cindy.
I might just come and work anyway.
Okay, so I need a motion to have December 24th be a city holiday for our staff.
Second.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado? Okay, what else?
Uh, when do you want the Christmas party?
When's it scheduled?
December 1st or December 15th?
December 1st.
They're both Saturdays.
December 15th.
All right, yeah.
1st seems really early.
Potato, potato.
What?
Potato, potato, either one works for me.
So the 15th is obviously closer. 1st seems early, but.
But people are so busy.
But, yeah, people usually get really busy, but the 1st, like, it hasn't really hit you yet that it's holidays.
I think we have that parade that day.
On the 1st?
The Merry Christmas Parade, remember where they moved it?
Yeah.
December 1st is that parade day.
So, wish, wish a merry as well, Christmas.
Is that a good thing?
So, well, I'm just saying.
There's events.
Cause this would be an evening thing, is the parade during the day.
What are we doing?
So what are we doing, Austin?
Haven't, haven't worked it out yet. I just need to get the dates settled with whoever.
Well, maybe you better find out if you can do it, if you can find something.
I got two options, and, and one of them's gonna be open, I fairly said. Uh, either we do something like we did last year, or we do something down with the wagon wheel or something like that. Uh, so I, I will iron, we'll iron out the details, but at least need to know, uh, the date to, to go with it.
Okay. You want to do it on the 1st?
First.
Entertain a motion for it's a Christmas party December, December 1st.
Move Christmas party for December 1st.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ado, all right. You'll let us know?
Yeah.
What you planned?
Yep. Let's see.
I think that was all I got.
What's this, what's this to say, Woldy, you didn't say anything about that?
That was what.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't say anything, cause it was just, that's a, one of the standard things, that somebody has to handle the evidence. Uh, and, uh, there's been a precedent said that that person gets an extra $2,400 a year.
Who's been doing it now?
Larry Winslow.
Larry Winslow was doing it, yeah.
Oh, well, but you should have brought it up.
No one's getting paid now, no one's getting paid to do it now.
It's down under.
Yeah, nobody's getting paid to do it now.
Well, yeah, but he went from here and then he skipped it. That's why I wondered if you weren't gonna bring it up or what.
Oh, I didn't skip it. I had the, I had the explanations in my, of the other ones.
And Deb's run it in twice.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys were all unaware of what was going on.
I see, okay.
David was more of a, uh, I, I think the standard.
Okay, I was just in line with these here, that's why I thought you were.
Okay, so now, is that everything for you, Austin?
Yeah, that's all for me.
And.
My only comment was that, that we will be moving the next meeting, which is November 12th, to, or to the 12th. It would have been on the, to the 13th, yes. To the, because the 12th is our holiday, the 11th is Veterans Day, but it's observed on Monday, so we have to move our meeting till Tuesday, the 13th.
The 13th?
Yep, Tuesday, the 13th, not the 12th. Yes. Same time as usual, just it has to go one more day.
We don't, we don't have to make a motion for that, right?
No, that's already an ordinance.
Okay.
It's an ordinance.
So now our meeting's on the 13th, so don't come on the 12th. Okay, go, go celebrate our veterans. Is there anything else?
No, now unless you want to start discussing moving the, moving the.
All right, standing committees. Um, do we have deadline dates for AHRS? There's still portions, concrete?
Yes, uh, the, they have until the end of October to finish the streets, and they have the end, until the end of, uh, November to finish the, the, um, ADHRS.
Didn't give them any leeway time for rain in their gontr.
They said they're gonna, they're gonna.
They're gonna pour tomorrow.
Yeah.
They're gonna finish this week?
They'll finish tomorrow.
Yeah, they got that one more section up on, uh, by Landals.
Okay.
It's ready to pour.
Yep.
And so do we keep the dump open Monday through Friday still for a while?
Yep.
When do we, do we close it?
Uh, after cleanup week, right?
Which is when?
Um, the first, it's the full week in front of Thanksgiving, so it's going to be November 12th through the 16th, and we will do it the same way we did before in sections.
Okay.
And we're advertising.
We're advertising it like that, so which, we'll go to your section one day, whichever day, and the guys ask that they, you put your stuff out between 8:00 and 1:00. So if you have to come in on your new hour to put it out, so that gives them time to cover the area.
And then the dump closes after that?
Yes.
Monday through Friday?
Yep.
Okay.
I was asking Cindy this afternoon if, if we couldn't get that information out in the fall newsletter, and she said, I haven't really started the fall newsletter.
We have not started the fall newsletter, that was right.
But she had a suggestion of maybe the high school might be able to work on a newsletter.
Right. Well, we, we should.
But I think.
We should get it out on the 12th.
I think we should, you know, since we're breaking it down in sections again, we need to get the information out to the public, especially since they just have the one day for the pickup.
And it will run in the paper for two weeks.
But a lot of people don't read the paper, they, they don't listen to Candy Y. They.
Don't get on Facebook.
They don't get on Facebook.
And we will hang it posted in our window.
Everybody gets the newsletter.
Okay, well, we'll try to get it out. That's all I can tell you.
And, and I'd like to see it in big.
Okay, you want to do the newsletter?
Like on the back of it, the back of the newsletter for the people who don't ever opened up the newsletter.
Probably be an insert, probably be an insert.
Okay. All right. Um, the last thing I have is 8th Road, 8th Street and Jayhawk Road. So, I don't know how many of you guys have been getting emails, uh, but I finally asked the question because I know at least one resident is very unhappy there, and I said, what do we need to do? And they said, you need to go to Rocky Edwards Rock Quarry South of Town and put good rock on. Limestone rock just turns to powder.
That's what we're doing.
You have rock from the route quarry?
Here's, here's what I also said, uh, cause, uh, one resident came in and talked to me. Quarry's can't keep up. We are getting rock as we can. Uh, whenever they, we have an order in, an outstanding order to give rock from Rockies, uh, as well as another quarry, cause we're kind of mixing, we're kind of mixing them, cause each rock has their own quality, and, uh, we felt that a combination of rock would work out in any condition. Uh, so we are getting rock in as we can, and then once we can get out, we're putting more rock down. We're not done maintaining, uh, Jayhawk Quarry, 8th Street. It's, they saw us put one load of rock down in it, rained, and they were upset.
Well, here's what I can tell you about Rocky's Rock. It is ag, or there's limes in it. When you put it down and blade it on, the first rain you get, you are going to sink out of sight in it. It has to get rained on so it can set and pack. Cindy knows that, how many times they dump it out there on your road. I mean, it, it just, it's real slimy on top for the first couple days after it rains, till that stuff.
Cement's in.
Yeah, till it gets set in there.
That's what I'm gonna drive.
Well, right now.
But you have to give it time to work. It just doesn't, and you can't put it on when it's wet.
Well, right now. After I got the newsletter, or news, email, not newsletter, email, I drove, drove the road and, of course, it was drive-in. It was nice and, and solid then.
Well, it's, uh, they went on to say, it needs to be graded every three weeks. That's how they said to maintain it. I just asked them, I said, well, how do you maintain a gravel road? I don't, and they said, it needs to be graded every three weeks, and you have to put that good rock on it.
The county went months this summer and didn't blade, because the road will eventually get so hard, the blade will not cut through it.
Do you any good?
You're just wasting your time, cause it, that literally picks the blade up. So you have to do it when it's wet, is the only time you can blade a road, when it's damp out.
Well, we've had some rain.
Yeah, I'm not saying we haven't, but.
But you can't blade it when it's too.
You can't blade it when it's too wet, cause then your equipment ends up in the ditch.
You're kind of in the corner with, with gravel roads.
Well, all I know is that when I drove out to Candy Y, that road was horrible.
It was.
And it was full of mud, and I was slip-sliding, and I had a big truck.
Right.
So, so I, we need to, if, if we're not gonna pave people's roads, if we're not gonna improve a road, we need to maintain the gravel road correctly. That's all I'm saying. So we need to get on a schedule and make sure this gets done.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, and I mean, but we're, we're behind the barrel when we can't even get the rock that we need.
Well, I don't know if I like the idea when you say you mix rock with other rock. I think you just want to put the rock down. I don't think you want to mix it with other rock. If you know that it's gonna turn into dust, why would you?
No, it's not, it's, it's a, it's a high-quality rock with a medium-quality rock that has a different.
Aggregate?
Aggregate, a different, so when, when Rockies get slimy, this other rock is picking up where it left off, so it's, it's making the road a little bit better. So it's, we're trying to make it at all weather road.
I'll just tell you that everybody I know, I've done a gravel road for more than 40 years, everybody who lives on a gravel road has a different opinion of how they should be maintained. And, and that's fact, and some things work in, with one kind of rock or with what kind of traffic you have. Depends if you have a lot of semis, if you have a lot of farm equipment, if you only have cars. It is not always the same.
This is somebody who lives in town, and we need to try to accommodate people that live on these roads, perimeter roads.
No, when we're, we're, like I said, we are not done maintaining it.
Okay. All right, and the other thing is, um, no, that's a different. You guys have anything else for street?
Yes.
Okay.
Austin, I had Austin print these out for me, since I didn't have a chance to print them out. Um, I've known, again, perimeter roads. This is 12th Road.
Uh-huh.
Have, have you been getting pictures of the conditions on 12th Road? Here's some.
But I have noticed it's bad.
It is bad, and the point of these pictures, and they are not labeled, but I can probably, I got them via text message, so they aren't gonna have all of them with them.
We drove out there the other night.
You can see.
Is this also a gravel road?
Yes. Yeah, this is, uh, you can see in the first picture on this page, you can see like Mick Keating's houses would be up here on the, right, um, to give you a little bit of a point, place of reference. You can see the same road to the right, which was 24 hours after the blading. I didn't take the picture, this is being reported to me, but.
Wait, you're saying this was?
This was first, and then this.
One day later?
One day later. And you can see the road before blading on the backside with all the chuck holes.
Township.
I, I dropped Austin a line about it, because they said it was awful. I was not in town that day, so, but I mean, it's like, you can see where people were just trying to dodge the massive holes, and then it gets bladed, but I don't know if the base isn't there, I don't know if this is a rock issue or it's just a purely traffic issue, but understandably, people out there are extremely, cause it's a bunch of people who actually drive this road. I'd say it probably gets more traffic than even 8th does.
But we drove, we drove out there Friday night. We drove, you know, if you drive, it's, it's posted for 30 miles an hour. We drove 30 miles an hour on it, and granted, it's rough, but even the concrete out there in Keystone is not what you'd say really smooth. I mean, you know, it's not smooth by any means, but it's a gravel road, and I know it needs to be maintained, but.
This, there's a, there's kind of an issue where it seems like, understandably, folks on 11th Road want a nice asphalt road, but they have an asphalt road, whereas folks on 12th want an asphalt road of any kind to be better than this, in that, you know, and I, I would.
I don't know, I've seen the 11th Road pretty bad.
It's been pretty bad, but I'd still prefer it over the, over, well, over this page.
Right.
Right.
And, I mean, I think the frustration, too, is we talk about, you know, long-term plans, but, you know, we've been talking long-term, we've been talking about this road since I've been on council, so seven years, and we don't have anything firmly in place. And I think a lot of people will be happier when we have, like, this is, this year we're gonna do this.
Well, that's why I really want to get in and talk to the commissioners and we start talking about those perimeter roads. However.
Get something moving.
We've inherent, we took on Jayhawk and Eighth, that's not a shared road anymore.
No, correct.
Those are ours.
Right.
But these, 11th and 12th are both, um, shared roads.
Eighth may get as bad as this, I haven't seen it this bad.
11th is, but Eighth and Keystone is. What?
I don't know if Eighth Road gets this bad, I mean, it might, I don't know. I mean, it gets a really washboard at the bottom of that.
I was going to say that hill, at the bottom of the hill, it gets really bad.
He's got that hill.
And all of our city citizens are paying county taxes.
Well, that's what we need to explain. I'm trying, I was trying to decide whether to wait till the election was over or not to go in there. I'm like, hmm, should I go in now or should I wait till after the election?
And, you know, if you talk to the folks out in, you know, uh, Keystone Edition.
Till after the election.
The case, the Keystone Edition folks will say, well, they're paying city taxes and they're not getting city streets. So, and I understand, but.
Well, you know what, you know what I really think though?
I know, I know, but, and I sympathize with that because I imagine they are paying plenty of property taxes and.
Well, I think that it's one thing to have a gravel road and it's one thing to have a road like this.
Yes.
And so if we can't figure out how to maintain a gravel road.
And this has got to be a daily frustration. I mean, if you drove this every day six times, you would just frustration. Well, I know, but.
But we.
We need to, we need to make sure it's in care because it goes to us.
Road that we have an agreement that they will maintain and we snow, right? We snowbladed, they maintain.
I believe they, they drybladed, we snowbladed.
Eighth Road is.
They maintain it.
I don't know about.
12th Road?
I'd have to look up 12th Road, I don't know if that's in that agreement, that's a different. It is Marisol Township, I do know it's Marisol Township, and that's who we have the agreement with out here by Brady Heights. And we've had that agreement for a lot, a lot of years.
Yeah, I thought we, they did the grading and we did the snow removal.
They grade, they grade it.
They grade it and we do the snow removal? I thought that's what our agreement was.
I know we do the snow removal within Keystone.
So do we have the discussion, do we ask the township to come in and have a discussion with them?
I, I don't know if we got to do that, I don't know what it's going to take. This is the only paved neighborhood we have that's an island away from pavement. So, I mean, my opinion would be we've got to find a way to bridge the island.
Well, why don't we try to get, figure out how to get good gravel roads and then have a long-term solution?
We need, yeah, we need to develop an actual like, in 2022 or whatever, we're going to do this.
You know, Todd, if he would go out there and finish his subdivision and put the streets in like they should, that would connect out to Keystone, they could go out Keystone over to 11th enough where it would be all.
Well, I wasn't on council when all that was approved to go in as it is now.
So.
So, wasn't any of my doing.
Me either.
Yeah, me either.
Well, I, I think though, it's worth having, we should have a discussion with Marisol Township.
Well, did I, Austin, did you talk to him? I mean, I, did you talk to him?
I haven't gotten anything back from him, no.
I mean, I called you and told you that they called me and you were going to, you were going to call him and ask him.
Right, because we have other issues, uh, but if you want him to come in and.
You want council to have a discussion, a street committee come in and talk to him about?
I, I don't know what the answer would be because they've been getting phone calls constantly, and Diane can attest to that, that they're not answering to the people who are calling. And, yeah, they, the people, we tell people, because we've tried to go, uh, actually, we fixed one of their roads that they maintain and they called up and go, why did you do that? Uh, that's our responsibility, don't do that, basically is what they said.
Well, I think we have to have the discussion. If we, if we just, if they're starting, if they're ignoring the calls from the residents, we should have it, try to have it with a committee.
Technically, I think it's a township.
And I talked to one of them the other day. Told them, I talked to one of their township people the other day and asking if he was still on the township, and he said yes.
Well, let's, let's have the street committee meet and have the discussion, we have to have the discussions.
Bottom line is, I don't think we can force their hand. I mean, they know the problem, I don't think they care to solve the problem. I mean, I think inevitably it's going to be our problem to solve for our residents.
Well, we also have to have the, um, we have to try to talk about it. We can't just not answer the.
I know, I agree, I mean, we have to do our, try to get to there somehow.
And, and, and I also think that we have, it's an opportunity for us to talk to township and say, this is another perimeter shared road that we need to talk to the county. So united, we need to be united when we present it to the commissioners as well. So I think we start with having a discussion with them.
Great.
Okay, with the street committee?
I think as long as the process is moving forward and people can see that we're moving forward, that'll help a lot.
That we're trying.
Because I would be the same as them, I'd be frustrated if nothing were happening.
Okay, so let's set up a street committee, Cindy, with the township board, see when they can do it. And, um, we have to have the, we have to get them at the table, you know, so.
Is it getting to the point where they just are going to neglect it enough? And like, we just went ahead and did it, they just are trying to manipulate us into just doing it? We can do it, but we can charge them also too.
I do know that these residents have gone to the commissioners and asked them to get the township to do something. And the commissioners said it's the township's road, the township's responsibility.
No, but, but the townships pay county taxes too. We have to have those discussions with our county commissioners. However, we're waiting for the election.
But they're going to get new town, because the person I talked to is going off the board the end of the year.
Would you like me to wait or you want to start it now?
No, we need to have the discussion because as soon as the commissioners get determined, we need to go in and start the conversations now for the 2019 and 2020 budgets, I mean, really.
Yeah.
So.
But there'll be new township people at the end of the year too, so.
I know, well, I think we have to start.
Yeah, I know, I realize that.
If we push it till January, then.
I know.
Anything else on the street? All right, water sewer? Parks rec. Um, the only thing I do want to say is I, I read in these highlights about the disc golf on the Parks and Rec Committee meeting, and so I guess my comment is, so now Sport and Rec owns the baskets?
They spunled the money through Sport and Rec.
And then Sport and Rec said they will only give them to the city if they're at City Park.
They were going to donate with the stipulation that they go in City Park.
If they aren't permanently allocated there, then they maintain possession or re-claim possession, I guess is the case would be.
Yep.
Okay, so then, I guess you kind of go to the Lakeview course, I mean, to have a, there's not going to be comparable then, right? Because you're not, you're not.
The baskets won't be comparable.
The baskets won't be comparable.
Nope.
And are they going to revise the course to make it better?
They were trying to, they were having somebody, an experienced disc golfer relocate the tee boxes to make it better.
And then when I read about this Patterson Trust, you made a comment that you talked to Beth Vinnie and she will donate the land if it continues to go to Girl Scouts to take care of the trees.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't have a disc golf basket on that property because she wants it for the Girl Scouts and trees.
She said, as long as we let the Girl Scouts keep doing what they're doing. So as long as we allow them to maintain those trees, that's all she asked.
Well, I would want you to call her and say before you.
I, I talked to.
To tell her about a disc golf.
I just, she asked what we were doing, I said, we were putting a disc golf course through there and we didn't want to be on somebody else's property or going over somebody else's property or something like that. She was completely fine with whatever we were doing, as long as it went to City Park, attached itself to City Park, uh, and that we let the Girl Scouts still have their trees there.
The trees that are currently there and we don't move them out?
Right.
Okay, and that's what the agreement would say.
Yeah, she is, she, it's not an agreement, it'll be a letter.
MOU?
Stipulating.
Like an MOU?
No, it's, like anybody else, like if I donate some money, I say, this is for this. And that's what the stipulation in the letters should say, as long as.
Okay, because I don't want to dishonor her request.
Right, no, she asked what we were doing and I told her exactly what we were doing.
So I, I just have to ask the one question. Why are we not having someone design it for us? I still don't get that. I understand we have, we got, but why aren't we having an experienced disc golf person that normally designs courses, design the one at City Park? If you're, if you're saying that disc, the baskets have to go in City Park to get the disc baskets, why aren't we having someone with an experience of placing baskets involved? I don't get that.
I heard that he had designed it for us.
Well, that Dennis Fosch was, why aren't we having him involved? Why aren't we, we're paying $2,500 for a squirrel and we're going to put a disc golf course in that we have no, no expert involved with?
I believe, um, the idea, because there was, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was a promise that this would not cost the city money.
I know, but I'm just saying, it seems like if now we're told that the golf, discs have to go, if the baskets have to go in City Park, that's their requirement. Why aren't we having someone who has experience just lay out the course instead of just throwing it out there? When we, when we did Lakeview, we didn't have anybody come in, we just had the Marisol Sport and Rec.
No.
Lay it out.
But that's why Kyle, I mean, Kyle did not design the course himself. He reached out to somebody that he felt was a lot more experienced than he was.
But I spoke with Dennis and Dennis said that was not the course he laid out.
Yeah, there were kind of like a couple of things that he discussed with and modified.
But again, if you're going to, if that's a requirement, why aren't we spending $200 or $300 to have somebody and lay it out for us? I don't understand.
It was going to cost more than $200 or $300.
But that was buying the baskets from them.
Uh, it wouldn't be sad. Can we do that then? Can we give the plan, the current plan that we currently have, hire, the city hires someone and said, here's the current plan? Can you look it over and come in and install them?
I think we need to move forward with what we, we're going to get comments. We've already talked about how we're going to collect opinions. I think we've kicked this around. And it, I mean, I don't, I understand the varying perspectives, but I think we need to give it a chance as we've already voted to do and move forward with it.
In other words, there's a group that does not want to do it properly. That's.
I, I think there's a group that will fight this in any way they possibly can to keep it from moving forward or delay it or cut it to death by a thousand knives.
But that's not my point, that's not my point, my point.
Death of it, it's ridiculous, it is ridiculous. I'm going to lose it because it's ridiculous.
But what you're doing, you're doing exactly what you did in Lakeview. You didn't have a professional plan the course.
They didn't have a disc golf player even plan it. This is a player signed off on by a bunch of people who play it. None of that happened in Lakeview, it's not the same.
But why, but when we go and we do anything, we have engineers and we have planners and we have contractors.
I think he was in favor of spending a bunch of money on that, I mean, I hear complaints about the squirrels costing money. Not that the squirrels aren't a good thing, but I mean, people complain when you spend money, especially if you don't.
So you spent $2,500 for a squirrel?
Can we hire him to come and, and help install or be there when they get installed? I don't know, I'm just.
Well, I understand Dennis has not actually been walked the park and saw where Kyle would place the baskets.
I think he did see Kyle's design.
Yes, he saw his design.
To note that they were different than what he proposed.
We saw design at the meeting, they had the design from Seneca, I believe, right?
Seneca.
And that, and that one went over, what, two roads? Right next, I mean, it was right in the middle of the park.
Did you go look at it?
No, I haven't.
I went and looked at it, and it's in the back of a school and it's a big open area.
Well, but some of it's not, some of it goes right next to the swimming pool.
On the map, it went across roads.
And the map does go across, yeah.
Next to picnic areas.
I'm not saying to pick all that apart, I'm just saying before you have it put in, why can't we have Dennis come and, and at least lay, lay it out based on the property we know now that we have?
I would put in, we've got the baskets, we've got donations to weld the discs on there and then the discs donated to put them in the ground. Temporary, but solid enough that they won't be stolen.
I can't, I can't believe that you're, we're spending $2,500 for a squirrel and you won't have an expert design.
But see, a lot of people would say that they're happy that we aren't spending money and they're upset that we're spending $2,000, that we're spending money on a squirrel, that's the thing.
I mean, like, we have part, I mean, we do a lot of things that we don't necessarily have every possible professional advise on. We do have a lot of these things, but not everything. And when it comes to something that people don't want to spend money on, I don't think it's a good expenditure of money.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking a couple thousand bucks, I'd rather spend it on the road.
No.
I mean, or sometimes.
No, the whole, the whole bid, the whole bid from Eric McCabe with all the baskets was like $3,600 or something, whatever he sent. But that was with all the baskets, so you, I mean, it's reasonable to understand.
As I remember it, we were bogged down in the bringing like three or four different designers in.
That's what I said, just make it easy, just have Dennis come in.
Selecting one.
Dennis comes in and designs it and we install them, are they permanent or is it still a test? Because I, I mean, to me, it's like we're either doing it or we're trying it. Are we doing it or are we trying it? Because right now, we're talking about trying it, but that would be doing, because then we've got money expended and installed.
Well, if they're only being donated if they stay in City Park, then I would say it's doing it.
Then it's installed, it's not, it's not for review, it's installed. We're not going to review it in six months, it is what it is, we're moving on.
If they're, if that's the only way they're donating them?
Also, a part of the temporary status was to make sure we're not too close to something, too, uh, if we could adjust the hole over here and make it that much better, I think that was also a part of it.
Yeah, because that was also in something that I had read somewhere.
If this temporary thing comes back with that, like, oh, these are kind of awkwardly laid out, then, okay, they're not permanently installed, then you have Dennis come and we decide to tweak it or we decide not to do it.
I think it's better just to have Dennis do it on the front end.
I'm okay with doing that, but I don't want it to be like we're spending money and then we're going to review it and then have to throw it away potentially. You see what I'm saying?
I, I think, um, I think it would be better not to do anything with Lakeview and just leave it there because that's, you're not going to, you're not going to have a comparable course to compare. So I think if, the thing is, if we're going to have disc golf, the only way they're going to have disc golf is at City Park because Marisol Sport and Rec will only give us the baskets if it's at City Park. So it's at City Park or nowhere. I mean, that's basically where it is.
The issue with some of the, putting up some of those baskets at Lakeview is that those are installed in with a fly ash.
Fly ash.
Several feet deep and they, if they try to remove them, they would mangle the basket.
Just mangles the pole and the basket.
See, basically.
Well, they're not standard baskets.
They're not, they're just homemade.
FFA shop.
FFA shop, yep.
I'm going to go back to, we've got zero dollars spent right now, well, kind of, yes. We're not investing heavily at this moment. We've got a plan to test it, we've got a plan to survey people on it. I understand it's not apples and apples, but it's, you know, oranges and tangerines. And we're not really quizzing them and hopefully the survey wouldn't be designed, would be designed in such a way where we're trying to eliminate that variable, the baskets, and we're really just accessibility and course layouts what we're trying to suss out. That's what, if you design a proper survey, you can design out variables that aren't the same. And that's the purpose of good research. So I'm not in favor of spending the money, but if we're going to spend the money and it's going to be a done deal, that's I would consider, that's just me though.
I, I hate to just have, you do have to agree that the little pin things are not very exact. What we've saw as a council is not a very accurate layout. You have to agree that.
I mean, it's not surveyed out.
Well, it's not very clear. And even, and you keep saying that, you know, they're still going to tweak it, well, why? It just seems like we should get it right on the, or the best they can do on the front end.
Well, right, and I'm, I'm okay with that as long as we're actually doing it, but I don't, I, we don't have any other engineering come so we can put in a street and maybe rip it out. I mean, I, I think we should either do it or, and try it for nothing and pass fail it or spend the money like you're saying and do the thing.
So if you say it's a trial, you're still going to, people can still vote to not do it at all?
Well, yeah.
That was the whole purpose of the trials.
Yeah, people can vote that they like one or the other or neither.
We might, we might review it next spring and then six people vote against it and then they get jerked out.
I've heard a lot of bad things, the survey data came back.
I would hope not, but you never know what.
So you're going to prepare a survey that actually says, you know, that, that you're going to have their name.
Well, actually, you don't actually, I mean, you can.
You have to have their name.
No, no, I think good survey data, you don't ask names. You ask other information to try to figure out what kind of person they are as far as if they're a regular disc golfer or not, if they're local or not, you do that sort of thing. You can offer them to put their name if they want, but people will generally not tell the truth.
Well, how about if you were really in favor of, why wouldn't you fill out 100 surveys?
Well, it's, it's not.
I mean, sure, anybody can game this, this is my guess.
Yeah, the survey is going to be more. They do have to bring them into City Hall, is that correct?
Anything else?
I would assume that anybody that goes down there and plays a course and fills it out.
I, I think, I think it's only fair if you have an, so that everybody.
See, that, that just goes to the people who like to stir trouble though. I mean, those are the only ones who are really going to sign their name on half that stuff.
Stirred trouble, what are you talking about?
Squeaky wheel. Do people write you positive comments? You, how many city council emails do you get? You're doing a great job, Mayor. No, they only do it when they grumble and they're only doing it because they're willing to sign off on that grumble. I don't think you can get, okay, how many survey research classes? How many social science research classes have you taken? I've taken a bunch. Yeah, I know you have too, put your hand down.
You know, the thing is that, well, then, why don't we put it on the ballot? Then everybody gets one vote.
What are we, on the ballot?
Yeah.
Disc golf?
Yeah.
What, next year?
Yeah. Why, why wouldn't you do that then?
Because we don't put lots of things on the ballot, because where do you draw the line? That's why we can't, we can't, we can't be California with all of our props putting everything on the ballot. You know what I'm talking about, it starts getting ridiculous.
Well.
I think there's things that go on the ballot and this isn't one. This is one where we need to make a decision, and frankly, we have made a decision. I think we either need to stick to our guns or come up with a better plan, but just constantly re-washing our hands is max of mental illness, not success as a governing body.
Well, you know, the only thing is that this is the only thing that we have just kind of washed our hands of from an experience thing. Every time, everything else, you know, like this bid specs for the salt shed, we were specific. This, this has not been specific and has not been.
Because it's supposed to be on the cheap, I mean, that was the whole.
So we put something in our City Park because it's cheap.
No, but.
Cheap.
But it's something that.
Cheap is the only thing that matters on this?
Almost nothing, that was the beauty of it, we had volunteers.
And so if we spend $500 to have it laid out as best as can be laid out, that's a bad choice of $500?
The meetings, it was going to cost a lot more than that. We were getting to the point where there was even discussion about surveying the entire City Park to lay out.
And did I mention the death by a thousand cuts? This is just going to be the next thing that opens a door to another door to another door. It's a Russian nesting doll of problems that I think we, we're at a point where we can move forward, experiment, get data, come back, make a final determination.
In other words, Carla, they don't want to do any research, they don't.
Okay, you know, and all due respect, this isn't a team thing.
Here's what I think, we have way bigger issues that we need to deal with than disc golf. We have spent more time on disc golf than we have on salt sheds, on 100 of the things that we used to be solving besides disc golf. This should have been an easy, no-brainer, boom, boom, done. I think Seneca started after us and they've already got their course in.
And they're laughing at us.
You know what?
And everybody is laughing at us that has already gone through the process and got a park in.
I have been to the Seneca course and it does not, I mean, maybe there's just these slight roads. It was the golf course is where it is.
Oh, it is on the golf, anyway, you know what? I, I, I just was thinking we should lay it out in the best that we can. If you guys don't want to, that's all right. We will just proceed, have a temporary, um, we'll go ahead and do the temporary course at Lakeview, that's what's been decided.
Madam Mayor, I just was kind of concerned that you're talking about a special interest. You can call it whatever you want, but it is a special interest, people that like to play disc golf. If they come up here and play, they're going to do the voting and they're going to decide what the people of our city own and want to keep here also as a city park. I think the voting should be held to the people who live here and pay taxes and shop at our stores.
We aren't asking for them, we're just asking input, I mean, we're just asking input for people to play the course, just, just like when people use the RV park down there and they, and they fill out and, you know, whether they, whether they're experiencing stuff.
Nobody asked me for surveys on the RV park, or, or this, or that, or the other, I mean, you know, they did vote, people voted when they elected us to make decisions, that's when they voted.
Well, this is something people are putting on top of a city park, you've gotta remember that. No matter what you wanna say, six to two, you guys held that, or we held that meeting, it's six to two, let's live up to the motion. Put it in there the way the motion is, not the way you wanna design it later, you made a motion to do it, you passed it.
Agreed, that's what I'm saying, we should do it the way we voted to pass it, not redesign it now.
And as long as it doesn't interfere with anybody else's property.
Right.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Won't be very long.
Hold it, oh, something else on, on Parks and Rec, uh, swimming pool, are we gonna put water back in it or not?
No, they don't.
The consultant said this time around, since it, uh, the last year, the, the shoreline, as I'm calling it, was degr, was degrading away. So that consultant from Continental Pool said, take the water out. They're the ones who did the, the pool lining in the first place, so they told us that we, they recommended that we just drain it.
Set it all in the water, weren't you on it?
The liners, the one that, they're the ones that told us to drain it, right?
Yeah.
Hydraulic pressure's what keeps it down in the wintertime.
Right.
I just don't want it to go, you know, like our old pool, you know, we were eight inches off on one end.
Well, the Diamond Bright people are the ones that told us to drain it this time, right?
But it's the Diamond Bright people, not the people that built it.
You have that in writing.
So the first pla, so the first Diamond Bright people said, Phil, keep it filled.
Right.
And now Diamond Bright says, oh, you need to empty it.
But Diamond Bright didn't, but Diamond Bright put the stuff on the finish, they didn't build the pool.
Continental Pool is who, who's been coming back and smoothing out where it's been eroding.
So has Continental Pool said that we don't need water in the pool, that's your question, right?
That's my question, so it doesn't, cause I don't know very many pools that settle one or long with no water in them.
But really, did you get this in writing?
I didn't, I don't think.
Can you, can you get it from now? I'm just saying, because later, I don't want them to go, well, that's not what we said.
How long's our warranty?
I don't know. Was it five years?
I thought it was like five or eight years or something, yeah.
But you know, if that pool, you know, ends up out of balance again, like our old pool did, you know, we were eight inches off on the old pool.
Eight inches, what do you mean by that?
The south east corner.
Decreased?
Yes.
It's eight inches.
When the pool was full, it was running out the other end and it wasn't full on the west end.
Well, you wanna get that in writing?
So.
Should we put that in? Pool, empty, Continental Pool. Document.
It's a nice pool, I just don't want anything to happen to it.
I know, I know.
Cool you got there, you ain't for anything to happen to you.
I know, and, and, and we hate to say, well, Diamond Bright told us to do it.
Right.
So, we kind of, we wanna make that, we wanna be smarter than that.
Right.
Okay, anything else on Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire, are you working on CDVG?
Uh, yeah, the, um, survey process, we got the list, how, how they do it is, they get a list of our water customers, residential water customers, uh, we also have to get a list of, um, people in the township, because that's where our fire district, that's where we sit, the townships as well, the two townships. So, uh, North Central Regional Planning is talking, is going to talk to the county about getting that done, uh, those lists, and then they submit that to, uh, Department of Commerce, I believe handles CDVG. And they then spit out a list of probably about five hundred houses, our residents, that we send the surveys to.
Okay, so what's our timeframe there?
Um, we have to get to both see if we're qualified and get the application in by November first of this year.
So we have to get the whole survey done, okay, so we have the five hundred, so we, we, right now, we're working with the county to get the last addresses for the two townships, that's where you're at?
Right.
Okay.
And, uh, North Central Regional Planning is, uh, up against current year deadlines, so they're, they said we got plenty of time to do this, uh, because it's a year to get the application done, if we do qualify, um.
Well, November one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By November one next year, so they, they will get back to me, uh, after they're done with the, with their current round of applications.
Oh, they're putting it for November one, twenty eighteen?
For November one this year, yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's well underway, she said, uh, that getting it back is not the hard part, so it's, the hard part is getting people to actually submit surveys.
Yeah, well, once we get that list, I mean, I think, um, so how do we get update, so if North Central's working, doing the work, how do we know who's responded, I mean, do they, do they get us?
They get us, it's, it's not, it's not, uh, they give us, they number the residents, so it's, to, to keep everybody's mind at ease, we're not collecting your personal, I mean, we're collecting personal information about your salary, but it's not too in-depth. Uh, one of the main concerns of somebody filling out the survey is, I don't wanna give you how much I make and what, how many people live in this house. Uh, well, it's a numbered thing, uh, I don't see your name, uh, or, um, or anything like that, it, and a lot of times when you mail it out, it just goes right to North Central Regional Planning and they tally it up for you. So we're not in City Hall receiving this and going such and such at whatever.
So do we, um, but the next step for the people who doesn't, don't respond, how, how are we involved?
We may, we try to encourage them to, to respond, uh, I would probably set up a reward system, uh, probably right off the bat. You fill out the survey, you're entered for a chance to win this, uh, and since we're including people that don't necessarily have water, I'd probably say a, a Visa gift card or something like that would be apt, uh, so you get into a drawing, uh, to win this, and that's, we, we encourage that, uh, it's, and, uh, we need to get as many surveys back as possible. And we can't change households, we have to go off the list that they give us.
We have to get one hundred percent of the household they give us?
I forget if it's one hundred percent, they.
They give you a slight?
I don't know, I don't know if there's a variance, I forget.
So do we have to do a big PR blitz on this before we start it?
Yes, I, I think it's a good idea.
And are you thinking we're gonna do it in January, is that your thought?
Whenever we get, um, I'd probably say.
Cause December's a horrible month for people to, they're getting Christmas cards, they're not getting.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, probably start of the new year, we'd probably start, uh, preempting all the, all the mailings we send out.
Okay, so January one really is our, kind of our start date?
Right.
Okay, oh, I should say, I did talk to, uh, I got an email about the Maricor Projects, and I talked to Joni Spillmeyer, and she said that they're, she's applying for that for the city of Marysville and the community, the Corporation of National Community Service, and they're the ones that came a couple of years ago, worked at the pantry. She was saying, uh, she was, she's applying for this grant again, so if there's, um, some projects that you think we need to do, to let her know. But anyway, just wanted to know, she was applying for that.
What about the side-by-sides?
What about the what?
The side-by-sides and the police.
That's what I was gonna ask her.
I don't think we, did, did you, did you get?
We were waiting on Bobby to come back.
Go ahead.
So we gotta schedule, we're gonna schedule that meeting, yep.
Okay.
I've been people asking about.
Okay, that's another street meeting, right?
No.
Police and Fire.
Police and Fire.
Speaking of that.
Any of that information didn't come through, I think I still have.
Nope.
Okay, you got it all?
Yep. Here are the committee lists, so everybody knows what committees are on. So there's no confusion, what?
I printed the list for the pod.
What'd you say?
He wouldn't know, I wouldn't know what committee I was on, I just, I printed the list.
All right, so, um, so the ATBs will still have another meeting, please set that up, and we're gonna set up a street one to meet with the township.
Right.
Anything else for, um, Admin and Finance? Okay, the wage determinations, I, um, the first one is for Deb Swinman, and the only thing I wasn't, should that be dated the twenty-second at the bottom? That was what my email meant.
Oh.
Should that say dated the twenty-second of October, and her start date is the thirteen, is that correct?
Those were just the days that we hired her, that we called them and actually hired them, that's why they were dated that, that's all.
So we probably should have it dated the twenty-second, because that's when we're approving them? Okay, you guys, you guys okay with that? Okay.
Cause all of them are, and we can just change them all then?
Yeah, to the twenty-second, cause that's when we're approving them, and then Heather started today, so that starting date's the twenty-second? And then David Oldy will be starting that, and just change that to the twenty-second?
Cause that'll be, and the twenty-first is the beginning of that pay.
Okay.
That's why it says that it's.
All right, so the first one, Deb Swinman, fifteen dollars an hour is, uh, payroll clerk, Austin explained why she was starting at that rate. I think she'll be a great employee, here's our motion to approve with the date changing to October twenty-second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? ADO, next person up is Heather Felty, she's gonna be our utility clerk, she is at thirteen eighty-six per hour.
I move to approve Heather Felty at thirteen eighty-six per hour.
Is there a second? And those should be changed to October twenty-second as well, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? ADO, and the last one is Evidence Custodian, David Oldy, this is the one that Larry Wensley used to take, we'll change the bottom to October twenty-second?
Move to approve David Oldy as Evidence Custodian with the date changed to the twenty-second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? ADO, all right. So we're done with that, uh, I don't know of any need for an executive session, anybody have anything? So we'll go on to roundtable, uh, first thing I would like to say is, uh, thank you to Cindy and Sammy for covering four positions for this week. And we have one new employee, so you're gonna cover at least, you have one helper, trainee, so thank you for doing that. Uh, I'm thankful the school, uh, let me come in and talk to seventh graders about if I were a mayor contest again, so it was in last Friday and this morning, and I'm anxious to see what they come up with to make, to improve Marysville. One of the things, um, that was really stressed at the League of Kansas Municipalities was, uh, long-term strategy and visioning for our city, and that's one thing I don't think we've done, where do we want Marysville to be in twenty years, which kind of leads to this. Um, are you gonna discuss this, or what, what, what's this for?
This was just to read for next time.
To read for next time?
Yeah.
Anyway, um, so I went to this league of, did you, did you guys go to that one, about long-term, long-term strategy visioning? Or was it just me? No, okay.
Is that where you listed the priorities?
Well, it was, it was the last session in the afternoon, I don't think you were in there with me, but, um, it was really talking about getting all the stakeholders of our city together, say where do we wanna be, I think, um, you know, we're trying to stretch the financial side to get to that five-year plan. Let's try to make that happen, especially on our streets, but I think this is more like, where do you wanna see Marysville in ten years? Where do you want to see Marysville in twenty years? What do we wanna be known for, the city of Marysville? So, um, it kind of ties to with that, um, conference, uh, from the Parks Association, that federal conference that I got from, um, anyway. Big picture, trying to see where we wanna be, and, um, so I did talk to Jen about it a little bit, and she had already started preparing this, so, um, go over this, and is she gonna be here next time?
Yep.
To present it? Okay, so just kind of thinking about, you know, the seventh graders, here I am telling seventh graders to dream, what, if you could have anything, what would you think we could do in Marysville, and then I'm thinking, well, we don't do that as a city council, so I'm encouraging us to do that. Uh, last thing I would, was thinking, um, we should recommend, and you guys can see what you think, but, um, I think the council needs to know our employees better, and, um, I'm thinking maybe the best opportunity is if, once a month, two council members take an employee out for lunch. Number one, it should make them, you know, get to know them, we get to know them, they get to know us, uh, two council members, one employee, and then we do kind of a rotation, and it's just a way for us to get to know them on a personal level, they get to know us on a personal level, and I think it'd be good for our climate and our, 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 uh, employees, thoughts?
Are you talking like the guys in the shop too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think it's very important for us to get to know all our employees, not just City Hall.
No, I was hoping you were gonna include them.
But, you know, like our parks guys and our street guys, and, and it's, it's not put, uh, by having two or, two or more, I guess we could have three, but two or three council members with the employee or the governing body, cause I wanna include myself, the key thing is to not fill them, make them feel, um, intimidated or whatever, just having two, but it still gives us an opportunity to get to know them, and it's a little perk for them to take them out for lunch, it would, it would go against your budget, but I think, I think in government and admin, but I think it would be a good thing for our employees, what are your thoughts?
Oh, I think it's a good idea, I also like to see a picture of each employee with their name, because.
Employee Facebook?
I kept the pictures from the advocate that had the first responders for all the fire department and the policemen, so, you know, to remember what all their names are, but it would be nice to have it for the rest of our employees, but it's just an opportunity for us to get to know them, they get to know us, and, um, casual environment, over lunch, pretty easy, let them pick the place, and what do you think?
Can they come off the link?
No.
Trust me, trust me, they'll all want some good food options, I figured.
They might, but you, do you never, you don't ever work from home?
Not yet, not till next year, so, but you're telling me to do this in the spring maybe?
Yeah, I'm thinking we should probably start maybe in January, cause with the holidays and everything in November and December, but starting in January, I think it's a good thing for us to implement, and, uh, and just, and also kind of keep track of who, with the employees, go with who, so that make, we all kind of hit all the different employees instead of, you know, just the department heads or whatever. You guys game?
Sure.
Okay, that's all I have.
Can we take a rubber hose with us when we go on these dinners?
What would we use that for?
That's alignment deal.
Alignment? Am I missing it?
That's all right.
Okay, you can explain it to me after me, okay, Darlene?
I brought this book that I bought at, um, at the league, and, um, it's written by, it's Reaching Your Next Summit, and it's written by Manley Feinberg, he was, uh, and I'm not sure if he still is, a CEO with Bill DeBaer, and I don't know if you're all, you know, maybe you're with Bill DeBaer, um, but he, his hobby is climbing cliffs, vertical cliffs, and he was an excellent speaker, he spoke to us at noon, and I still encourage all of you who haven't gone to the, uh, the league conference, that you really should go, not only for the speakers and the workshops, but also, um, networking. Anyway, he's got nine, nine vertical lessons, of course, he climbs a vertical. The first one is the call to reach your summit, which you were talking about, we should have, uh, talk about what we want to see in, in Marysville in the coming years. Uh, the first steps into the vertical, um, anyway, uh, first, we need to decide if it's worth it. Declare your current climb, get on belay, which means you have support people. Challenge your beliefs, and I like this one, ask the right questions, anchor your actions, celebrate the summits, and I think kind of like taking the, um, staff out for lunch would be celebrating.
You know, and you had that in your notes, the ending, celebrate endings, I believe, did you have that? Yeah, so. Anything else?
I don't.
Thanks Darlene, Bobby?
When I was traveling, I went from Marysville to Santa Rosa, New Mexico, from Santa Rosa down to Gilbert and into Phoenix, uh, then we were up in Jerome, Arizona, uh, went up to Santa Fe, and then I hit Lamar, Colorado, don't ever go there.
I was back in there too.
It was awful, anyway, but I would, just wanted to say, we've got some great water here, you guys. Even compared to all, cause I used to think Omaha water was good, we got good water here, I, and I use a three-stage filtration system, but I, I feel I can drink out of my, my tap here, there were a couple of those places where I turned. There were a couple of those places where I turned the tap on and it stunk. I've just, I wanna tell everybody here, thank you for the great water. All you have to do is travel around a little bit. And, yeah. That's it.
Isn't Lamar like on the way to Colorado Springs?
Yeah, you go south.
Yeah.
It's down south like La Junta.
It has all those, it has all those stockyards, I mean, the cattle yards.
And there's like specialty fruits and vegetables. Like when you get Colorado peaches, that's where they come from.
Well, that's why they're so nice and thick.
Yeah.
It was awful, cause thinking of that, when I was a little girl, my dad was a truck driver.
Wait a second, wait a second, you guys.
When I was a little girl, my dad was a truck driver, little, little. And my mom would get up in the middle of the night to get him. And if you've ever been down to the stockyards in Omaha, you smelled him a while away. And my mom relates a story that I was like, driving down there and when I, when I got probably 15 miles from Lamar, I was like, oh my gosh, that's awful. I remember that.
I remembered this smell.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Gina?
The trees look really nice downtown.
So do mine.
I'm sorry. As do the scarecrows.
And the scarecrows, yeah.
Yeah, they look cute. And leading into dreaming, um, just throwing it out there about, um, electric car charging stations. Um, we already have the infrastructure downtown with the barbecue, charging ports and the park. But looking into maybe ChargePoint or ChargeHub, which is an app on your phone for if you have an electric vehicle and it would pop up that Marysville has a charging station to come through and charge your car, since we're the intersection of 77 and 36. And it would bring a different clientele of people to the community, um, to charge their car. Cause when you charge your car, it's for 45 minutes to two hours. Um, and they would be downtown, going to eat, shopping, whatever.
Is it just one pole? Is that what you're thinking about, one?
One pole with maybe two plugs.
What about the people who live here and wanna use it?
Well, do you have to pay for it? It would be one of, the ChargePoint.
Cause we've already had that request a couple of years ago.
If they paid through, through the app.
Through the app. What, it would probably be, well, it would probably be through the app and then you pay like so much cents per mile or whatever, um, through the app, but the ChargePoint or whatever would probably have to rent the space from us. But also you're getting revenue in the city by having.
Now, these, these people live downtown.
This seems like the kinda thing too, convention and tourism and would be wanting to do and keep on board with.
To keep people here.
Cause they could put a little kiosk there and so get people downtown and spend money.
Well, but if you're on the ChargePoint grid, it's going to pop up in your phone, somebody who doesn't, who's traveling from California across the country and was like, oh, there's a ChargePoint station there.
Again, we have a link to all the traveling tourists and stuff. Oh, here's what to do in Marysville.
If you could keep it to that, and I mean, we, and there was a person who came here to work and she did go to the park. Her husband charged her car while she worked, for free.
You're never gonna get away from that when you, when you provide that. But it would be something that was advertised.
Well, find a pole. Make a recommendation. Find out the information.
I did talk to Austin for a little bit about it.
Tell us more.
Do they have special plug-in?
So, basically, basically what it is, is they, you get the pedestal, uh, depending on what brand you go with. And they could be a slender pole with a, with a charge, with the, the plugins on it, or some of them make them this big and that's just how they make them. But, uh, so you get those, you hook them onto electricity and then they're networked.
So, we can't use the poles that we have? I guess I was thinking of the poles we have.
The light poles that we have, we don't know if they have enough electricity going through them. Uh, so I, we've, me and David have brainstormed some locations that I have direct access to electricity. So, um, over by the Kester block, uh, by the park, that Kester Park, we have.
The gazebo area?
Yeah, uh, we have electricity right there.
Oh, we just put that, we just put for the lights.
Behind, yeah.
So, there's a light pole right on the corner of that alley right there that we would, uh, grab electricity from. Uh, we thought about behind Main Street, somewhere in there.
Parking is kinda tight there though for employees, if I'm thinking of the right way.
They have plenty of parking.
Oh, God, I didn't say that.
I walk by there every day. Uh, and there's employees parking on the south side, there's employees parking.
Are you, are you on the south side of that gazebo parking area?
No, I'm talking about right next to the alley.
Nah, that's what I was thinking, it's pretty tight there.
So, you, you block, you duck block off, but you designate two locate, two, two parking spots right there.
Two parking spots for electric vehicles.
And that's all you've displaced.
So, that only electric vehicles could.
Yeah, only electric vehicles there. And then, uh, I would say if we do it there, we also do it at some other place, uh, by, by the Main Street office.
I was gonna say down by the, around the trail, there's lots of parking through there and it would be very visible there.
Right.
Well, but it directs you on the app. Like you're like, oh, there's one and then as you get closer.
Right, but also it'd be cool to answer there's a PR thing.
Yes.
So, you put them right in front of the Maryville Main Street office that way.
Tesla keeps talking about flushing out their supercharger network. Right now, they're mostly interstate, but they started to get off on some of the intersecting, kind of filling in gaps routes. And there's Manhattan and there's Lincoln and we're halfway in between. I mean, I don't know.
We'd have four stations up there, you think that would be?
It sure would be cool if even Tesla had a supercharger station.
Seems like a lot to me.
There's nobody with, there's only one location.
That's right.
It doesn't cost us anything.
Seneca, I think the only location that actually has an actual electric vehicle charging station is Seneca along 36.
Wow, they do? Where's it at?
The hotel, one of the hotels.
The one, the one on the west side, where the pool is?
The newest one probably.
What's the, what's the?
Sleeping or Settlers and Settling.
Settling.
So, you think it's there?
Maybe I'm thinking about a different one, but there's, there's one, I found it on the map. There's one, there's only one on there along 36 on, in the state of Kansas. Uh, and there's others that, uh, have their campgrounds listed intentionally or unintentionally by whatever group, um, posted it because our campground is listed. Uh, but, uh, we, we would be the only, uh, one of two if we installed them right now, uh, along Highway 36 that are actual car charging stations.
You're gonna put them, do you wanna put them down? Put one downtown?
Downtown, that's what I would say.
And then attract, yeah.
Cause while you're charging your car, you're shopping in the community because there's always that one end that you'll pass at my antique store and you'll pass a light. There's that last spot.
That's the first spot I thought about, but that would take quite a bit of work in replacement of cement if we wanted to put it there.
Really?
Yeah. Uh, we looked at easy, easy access locations for electricity, maybe across the street in our parking lot, uh, maybe behind, Dave said.
By our parking lot, where you had?
The.
Oh, by the helping center?
By the way, way.
By the way, our parking lot?
It's getting kinda far away, but south there between Elm and Walnut, that rock section of 7th Street that's completely undeveloped.
Which we're developing next year.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying it's, right now it's open.
Alright, it's an idea. So, we, we were thinking about easy access to start it off. Uh, and at least two locations with two ports on them.
Be nice if one of them would be on Main Street.
So, what would they, and what would they cost to the city?
Is it too late to work it into that, uh, project?
One second. Into what part?
That, that project, the, uh.
The 4th, 5th Street?
No, the, uh, 6th Street Corridor, or the 7th Street Corridor proposal with.
That's not, and we can do that, yes.
You mean for the second set?
Yeah, for the second section, yeah.
Here is a Kansas City-based electric vehicle charging, uh, company. They charge, uh, it looks like they charge, uh, per year for how much and then, let's see. Let's see if they have the cost of the station. But you try, you pay for the, the service they provide, so.
You pay for the service? I thought there was an app where they pay.
Yes, yeah, but the.
They pay.
They pay for the service. We don't pay for it, do we?
Go on. Two years, uh, let's see, site validation. I'm still trying to understand what's in there.
Well, you wouldn't put it in and you wouldn't get the money from it then?
No, we, we just have the people stuck here for an hour or two to get them spend money.
But if it doesn't cost us too much money to put it in, then that's like cheap advertising. I mean, you're snagging them.
Yep.
Cloud service. Okay, I, I have to read more into this.
Okay, you can let us know. Okay, Gina, anything else?
Um, bike share, since we're talking about all these dreaming, um, bike share programs downtown, maybe do, like if you could get two or four bikes and put it in the same area or vicinity of the charging station.
I see those areas. Do you think they're used?
Oh, my gosh, yes.
There's, there's a hundred ways to run those kinds of programs.
We, we do Lime whenever we go out of town, but.
You do what?
Lime. It's just an app and you scan the scooter. We probably wouldn't do scooters cause they're electric scooters, but we do the, yeah. But we do the bikes. When we were in Tahoe, we went all over Tahoe on the bikes and the scooters, but it would just, I don't know, just another thought since we're pushing the trail and the, I don't know. It was just another dream big, but look into bike share programs.
I don't know what you're running for, but you got my vote.
Nothing.
Okay, here's, here's the actual bill that they, not bill, but, um, estimate. The ChargePoint, um, stations with, so a Ballard unit with two plugins is $5,768.
TA grant?
Is there a grant?
TA grant.
That's before you read the meter.
So, so, that'd be a $10,000 investment?
Yeah, and then, uh, one-year prepaid cloud plan, whatever the cloud plan does, um, is $280. The concrete, cause they, they did, they bid it as them installing after we get the electricity there, and they said 95 bucks for that. But, so 13,000.
Does it give the specs on the electrical? How many amps you got?
Um, 30 amps.
I'm just curious, okay. Oh, really? 220?
208 slash 240 volt.
240, yeah.
Okay, put it in your highlights. Put more information in the highlights. Is that fair enough, you guys?
What kind, what kind of information do you want?
Just kinda, well, you just looked at it on your phone, but there might be more.
More options, more.
I, I, this is just the first company to respond.
I'd be interested to see what Seneca, you know, where that's at, what they're doing. We can get some information from them.
Manhattan has chart, has a ChargePoint station.
Lincoln has a pile of them.
Lincoln has a lot, but Manhattan does have a ChargePoint station.
Lily Pad, which is what this is, uh, did a lot of Kansas City stuff that, in fact, they were the first one to install across the, uh, Kansas City area. They're not, it's just, they're not wide across the nation, I don't think, but they're pretty big in the area.
Okay, give us more information. Sorry. Alright, is that it? Gina?
That's it.
Terry?
Nothing. I was curious if they got the generator out of the dam yet.
Yes, it's been paid.
Is it gone?
I saw a picture in the newspaper, I figured they were pulling it out.
I wondered if it was going off the hill, so.
Todd?
That's all.
Um, you know, I don't know, I've never thought of the bike share thing before. Seems like I'd have been the person to bring that up, but, for whatever.
You wanna share your bike?
If, that's something we wanna look at. I've done a little bit of research and there's a lot of different ways to run those programs. I mean, you can do them with like free-range bikes like Manhattan has, which have their pitfalls. Or you can do them like Lincoln Bike Alonkatas, which is, you have docking stations. The good news there is people have to like enter some information to take that sucker out of there, so if it doesn't come back, it's covered.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Whereas Manhattan, you, then they're nicer bikes because of that. Whereas Manhattan's are kinda clunky, but you get what you pay for.
They're, they're one, they're one-speed, free to use.
And the fourth one you find has everything set so that it works. I mean, there's no bent pedals and the bars aren't, they're a little problematic.
If it was near where, if we were gonna do this ChargePoint thing, it would be car charging. You could take the bike and you could go somewhere, you could, whatever.
Why is he locked up in the river or whatever if you're not careful? Which happens, for sure.
Yeah, it seems like you, just, does somebody check the bike after they can return it? I hate to be stupid here.
Usually, okay, well, again, it depends. Sometimes they'll check them, they have people, the biggest systems that people contracted to check them and relocate them and kinda put them back where, kinda back where they should be. But if it were four bikes in a dock, I imagine it wouldn't be that hard to check them, I mean, a couple times a week or whatever. Cause I, I mean, depending on how much use, I mean, if they're super popular and they're getting flats, okay, I guess a good problem to have. But they should be pretty, the ones that you see for these are pretty bulletproof bikes. It's hard to break them and if people are happy to check them out, I mean, they're gonna pay for it. And you have, and usually you'll have a window where if it comes back broken, you know the last person to use it, cause they checked it out and they brought it back broken, well then they're on the hook for it. And they have to, when the app may sign it out, if they agree to all that. So, it wouldn't be that hard to administer and I mean, I'd be happy to work on something like that, cause I think it's cool. And since this town, the size of this town is not a common one to do it in, I think as long as you don't get over ambitious and try to put 100 bikes all over town.
I think if you did one station with like four bikes near the trail.
And I know the administrator of the Bike Alonkate system, I'll talk to her about it and see.
Just something to see.
We might be able to get the little discount too if we get through somebody else's program. Just a thought on that. The other thing was, I know you, I think, brought up last meeting this new chip seal, but I've heard a lot of good comments about it. I like it, I think it, I think it, I don't know, it's my imagination. It's a more even surface. It's nice for motorcycling or bicycling.
The more even surface is due to our crack ceiling.